All right, I'm gonna call this meeting of the Rockport Select Board to order for Monday, December 5th. Please turn off your cellphones or mute them, and if you need to take a call, please step all the way outside. I know the weather's not nice tonight, but that's the way it's gonna have to be. We have no public hearing. Our minutes, we have before us the minutes from June 15th. Do I have a motion?
Move to approve is presented.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Do we have any discussion? Corrections, comments, otherwise? This was our organizational meeting. Hearing none. I'll call for the vote. All in favor? That is approved. We also have before us for Thursday, September 8th. Go ahead, motion?
Move to approve is presented.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Any discussion? Corrections, omissions, errors, et cetera, et cetera? No? Hearing none. I'll call for the vote. All in favor, accepting is presented. That is passed. The next one.
Mr. Chairman, I just wanna make a correction to Linda. Is it if I didn't on the first one, I should've abstained because I was not present at that organizational meeting?
Oh, that is correct. Good catch. Good catch. The next one is October 11th, and we have that. It was an executive session. Motion to accept?
Yes, sir.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Any changes, omissions, corrections? Hearing none. All in favor? That has been passed. We then have the regular minutes for Tuesday, October 11th, before us. Do we have a motion to accept these?
So move.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Errors, changes, omissions, discussion? Hearing none. All in favor? Those have been approved. Monday, October 24th, we have those before us. Motion to accept?
So move.
Second.
Moved and seconded. I will have to abstain from the vote as I was not here that week, that meeting. Do we have any changes, omissions, or corrections? No? All in favor of accepting? And one abstention? So we got that. Then the executive session on Tuesday, November 8th. We have those before us.
Move to accept is presented.
Second.
Moved and seconded.
I will have to abstain.
You will abstain. Any changes, corrections, errors? Hearing none. All in favor? Abstain. One. And then Monday, November 14th, our last official meeting. Do we have a motion?
Move to accept.
Second.
Uh, second.
Moved and seconded.
Do we have one correction on this one?
You do?
On page eight. At the top of the page, it's a continuation of the discussion about the library workshop, and the last entry is Rick talking about the board's guidance regarding the budget, which I believe should've been under a different agenda item header. So I think we just missed a header in there someplace.
No, actually, I think he'd made that comment after we'd finished discussing the Wednesday, November 30th meeting, and then put that in before we went to wastewater, saying that he wanted to have guidance from us at this meeting.
I think he was talking about the budget in general.
Yes.
That's what I'm saying, is it's under the header for the library discussion.
I know, and we didn't...
I thought there was another...
It was at that point that he made the comment, before we left, as we went into wastewater. It wasn't really part of the item before, but that's where that...
I thought there was another agenda item for that, but if there wasn't, then I retract my correction.
Yeah. No, this was something that he and I had discussed, that we were gonna do at this meeting.
Other changes, corrections, discussion? All in favor of accepting them? That is passed. We now have finished with our meeting minutes.
Mr. Chairman, I actually, I had a very minor correction to October 11th, which I had on my notes flagged as November 14th. So I'm just gonna hand this to Linda. It's just two words, basically a typo.
Are we willing to accept that?
Sounds fine.
All right, we will allow that this time.
Yes. And kudos to Linda for starting the process of catching up on the minutes, by the way. I know it's not easy.
Yeah, thank you very much. Good job.
Very good to see.
Announcements. Our next regular select board meeting will be Monday, January 9th, 2017, here at the Opera House, livestream. We have an upcoming workshop that is Tuesday, December 7th, 4:00 p.m. over at the town office. There will also be the special select board meeting to continue our discussion of the library. That will be this Thursday, December 8th. That will be 7:00 p.m. here, and we will be livestreaming that.
Just a comment on the...
Yeah, that wasn't in the agenda up there.
But the TIF workshop?
Yes.
Says Tuesday, December 7th. That cannot be correct, because Tuesday is not December 7th.
It's Wednesday. You know how many people look at this, and they, and we just completely missed it. Okay, yes, you're correct. That's Wednesday, December 7th. Announcements. Town offices will be closed Thursday, December 8th, from noon to 1:30 for the annual town employee holiday luncheon. Town offices will also be closed on Monday, December 26th, in recognition of the Christmas holiday, and Monday, January 2nd, in recognition of the New Year's holiday. Committee openings are listed. We are down to agenda changes.
And Mr. Chairman, I move that we, under new business, move items I and L to right after item E.
Okay. Do I have a second?
Second.
And that's to facilitate Megan being able to go home a little bit earlier.
Yeah. Any discussion? We all in favor? We are. All right, we've made that. Any other agenda adjustments?
Do you wanna try to get the chief out of here earlier, too?
We make Randy stay later.
Hey, you know, the officers deserve a break.
Actually, maybe you wanna stay for the marijuana conversation?
Yeah. Okay. Public comment. Public comment should be directed at issues not under discussion on this evening's agenda. Comment from the public will be welcome prior to each agenda item. Further comment will be granted only by permission from the board. All public comments should be brief and to the point. Do we have anyone who wishes to make a comment tonight?
Helen Shaw on Pascal Avenue. I walk my dog three times a week. My husband walks the dog the other three days of the week, and for the past several weeks, there have been no poop bags. We bring our own, but it is very obvious that a lot of people don't, and given that we're having holiday by the harbor on Sunday, I believe it is, we really need some poop bags, especially down on the harbor. So I would ask that somebody make sure that those poop bags all over town be, the dispensers be refilled. Second issue, there's a car parked in the weeds at the intersection of Park Street and Main Street. It's been there for several months. I have no idea if it even has license plates on it.
Cross street.
Cross street. Cross street.
Oh, that one.
Yes. And somebody needs to look into it, and if it's, find out who owns it and get it out of there. It's unsightly, and it could be a bit of a danger in the winter. Thank you.
Anyone else wishing to make public comment? Hearing none. We shall move forward to the town manager's report.
Okay, Jan left. Summer Street. Summer Street is almost, we thought it was almost complete, we thought it was completer than it is.
Get the December 5th link.
We, we thought it was pretty near done. The only thing we were waiting for was the handrails along the steps to be fabricated, because they're custom done, and so those are, they installed the bases for those, and then took the measurements, and then they custom fabricate the piece. Bill Lane was checking on them last week, and I don't have an answer as when they were, when they're expected in. But we do have a more serious problem that has developed in the road. If you go up there now, or after it actually stops raining, you will, if it's raining hard like it did in the last rainstorm, there is actually, one of the most weird things I think I've ever seen, is the water is actually bubbling up right from the middle of the brand-new pavement and running down the hill. And then there's another place where it's running down the drain line, the drainage swale, where it runs down the swale in the pavement, and then disappears, just like magic. It's like David Blaine, the magic show. The water just runs down, and it's running at a pretty, I have some video of it, runs down at a pretty good clip, and then it just stops.
You can actually see the same phenomena on Union, on Pascal Avenue.
Yeah.
Where the state came and tried to fix that, and it has not...
Yeah, they, that was a whole different thing, but they came in and they dug up the wrong side of the road. Mike pointed it out to them before they came in and paved it, and they said they couldn't get back and dig up the right side, so they're gonna do that in the spring. So, so on Friday, I think it was Friday or Thursday, Mike and I were there with Bill, Will Gartley, spent a lot of time on that road looking, and looking at possible solutions. They're talking about trying to dig, because it's gonna be a problem this winter. As water comes down that hill, it will come out through the road and then freeze up, and it's right at the worst part of the road where that could hap, that'll happen. And it's not even, it's at the, it's on the side, so you'll be on the downhill side, and then you'll hit that ice going towards the stop sign.
Can we charge admission?
Yeah. So, they're looking at possible solutions. I don't think they've solved it yet, but no matter what happens, it's not gonna be pretty. There will be a lot of finger pointing as to whose fault it is, but it's, it is an unsafe condition now.
I just had two questions on that. Just sometimes I think, maybe you just worded it funny. Typically, I try to find the problem before I try to solve it. Do we know what the actual problem is, or are we just looking for a solution at the tail?
No, no, water's coming down, yes, we're, it's running down the ledge banking, and it's running down ledge and going under the asphalt, and they have to dig down to find the exact, the exact cause of the problem.
As long as you knew where the problem was. And then the other thing was, what is withholding that final payment? What would be the amount you're withholding?
I think it's about $45,000 is, is being held now.
If I'm remembering...
Plus their retainer.
Plus their retainer, yeah.
And there are problems with the grade of the road also.
Oh, yes, absolutely, yeah. There's also problems with the grade of the road, where the drainage, and Gartley and Dorsky went in and double-checked to make sure, to see if the road was constructed, constructed as designed, and the pavement was laid down as designed, and it isn't. There's, if you look at the bottom of the road, you don't have to be an engineer to see it, you can look at the bottom of the road, standing at the bottom, and see that it's uphill from one side of the road to the drainage on the other side of the road. So there's no way that water is gonna get into those drainage catch basins that we spent a lot of money getting in, and a lot of money blasting, ram-hoing through ledge to get it in there.
This has just been the road from hell, huh?
Yep. Yes, it has.
Do we have a plan for the winter? I'm thinking in terms of public safety, to close that road if we need to.
The hope is that, they're talking about getting in there very soon, to dig that portion of the road back up where it's coming in, and putting in a curtain drain. I don't know what that is, but some sort of curtain drain that will divert the water down the hill, rather than having a bubble up under the road.
Hey, Rick, you know what David Blaine uses? A curtain.
He uses a curtain. So they're working on that right now, and, you know, they were looking at it on Friday, and I'm sure they're working, Mike, Mike and Bill Lane and Will Gartley have been talking back and forth about that, but...
I just wanna make sure that we don't allow anybody to dry, I mean, even tonight. There's water running down there tonight with the snow, and it gets colder.
Yep.
That could be a real hazard.
Yeah, it depends on how long, you know, how much water it takes, that, what do we have, three and a half inches of rain that day?
Yeah.
Yeah, something like that, but I don't know. We just noticed it because we had so much rainwater coming down the hill.
When are we gonna know the financial ramifications for this?
It's gonna take a while before we know the exact, you know, it wasn't built to, it wasn't constructed as, as...
I understand. What are we talking about? Next spring?
That'll be fixed next spring. That'll take till next spring to fix, or past next spring. That'll be, I mean, they're looking at now a re-grind of the road and a re-shim to bring it down so that, there's no crown in the road, is what the problem is. It actually slopes, I'm exaggerating, like, but it's supposed to be crowned so that it drains towards the drainage catch basins, and it's not doing that, because there's no crown. So it has to... It's not gonna be an easy solve.
Do you have any way of knowing whether the $45,000 that you're holding back is gonna cover the town?
It's 45 plus how much?
The retainer.
I think the retainer is $7,000.
So it's, yeah.
You do?
No way of knowing if it...
Part, I mean, part of this is the contractor needs to correct.
Yeah, I was gonna say.
So that, that part, correct me if I'm wrong, that part won't be any additional. If we find stuff that we didn't plan to do, and we have to do extra, then that's gonna cost us some money.
Right.
The contractor fixing their errors, I don't think is gonna cost, shouldn't cost us any money.
No.
Meanwhile, we're making interest on their money sitting in our escrow account.
Three cents a month.
One and a quarter percent.
Really?
I really can't get into, there's gonna be, this is not gonna be an easy solve, and, you know, I don't wanna...
Executive session.
Yeah.
Okay.
School Street, the one, the piece of good news is, School Street, I went down there in the height of that rain with, with Mike when it was pouring, and the School Street drainage is working just as planned, just the way it's supposed to. There was one problem with the street that crosses school, for the Spruce Street, where the, just based on the time of the year, the, the catch basin was full of leaves, so the water wasn't draining. Once we pulled the leaves out, then it worked fine. But it's working just the way it's supposed to, and all the water's draining to the sides of the road, into the catch basins and under the road when appropriate, and into the drainage ditches, and past Kim's house, is it Kim? Past her house, instead of diverting into her backyard the way it used to go. And it goes into the catch basin, and then into the harbor. So that one is flowing correctly. The sidewalk and crossing signals on the West Street sidewalk extensions have been put on and hold, on hold until next spring, when the state gets back to work on that.
Rick, wasn't one of the other issues, they were gonna replace a culvert?
That culvert...
And they weren't gonna do that, and now it seems that they have done it.
The culvert has been replaced. The cul, they did get the culvert replaced, and that's what we were holding for.
And it looked like Public Works filled at least that dip?
We did.
Okay.
Because it was dangerous the way it was, because it was a drop-off about like that.
For sure.
So we went back and refilled that in, and the way we understand it is now, the whole project was bid out with DOT putting in the sidewalk landing pad and the sidewalk on the other side of the street. So they'll come in and do that whole part of the project, is what we were told. So that'll be next spring, summer. The sewer covers on Pascal and Central Street have all been lowered, have been raised, I'm sorry, they were low. So they've all been raised, so they should be fine now. There was, there's one that I wish we had gotten to in front of the Lada's House, that there are, there's several of them that are low, but they're not directly in the travel lane, but the Lada, the Lada's House one is, is pretty close.
I noticed something, Friday, I had to bring my wife over because she was dropping off some pies from their Polly Berry Fair, and I just parked in front of the Stewex driveway. And I noticed that several of the trucks and cars that were coming down the hill were hitting the manhole, and it was going up, kaboom, kaboom, like the manhole cover is bouncing around in there, like it's not seated correctly.
Yeah.
So...
Which one, which, oh, right, right across here, yeah.
Yeah. Yeah, right, you know, just across from the Stewex Drive.
Yeah, that one is. The streetlights, the, with the retirement of Mark, Mark Kelly was working on the streetlight project, trying to identify them all. He got quite far, and then it, it kind of fell off the radar, so Randy has, has been working with Craig, and Craig Cooley has taken on this project, and we're trying to track him down. It appears that it does, it's not, initially, there was a number that was in the twenties or so of streetlights that were, we were in the wrong town. It turns out now that it's, I think it's less than 10 that we've had difficulty identifying. Most of them are just the differences in the way CMP labels the roads and we label the road. So they've gone out and actually looked at every pole and identified the pole number, and I believe, is it Brenda is her name? Somebody from CMP is coming in and gonna be meeting with Craig, and they will go down, go around and identify those last few, so that we should be all, all set. But who sent me the email? Somebody sent me an email about...
Rockland and Larry Pritchard?
Yes, right.
Was that you or Jeff, was it me?
Somebody sent me an email, and so we've, we've started to look into that, about, about...
LED light.
LEDs, switching over to LEDs, and if that could save us money on the rest of the streetlights in town. So, and apparently, Rockland, Larry Pritchard did a lot of work on that, and it seems like it might have some promise for us. Mike said he was gonna, gonna look into it, and Megan is also aware of it to some extent.
Jan told me tonight that he's meeting with Larry Stewart about the LED.
Oh, okay, yeah.
Maybe it was Jan that sent that email.
Yeah, oh, maybe it was, yeah. I'm guessing it was. So it does sound like it has some promise of a way to save us some money. The streetlights on Goose River Bridge that have been out so long since they, since the snowstorm two years ago, they're in the process of putting up another streetlight at, on the new pole that they replaced, just so that we'll have a light up there until we can replace the two concrete poles that were on the bridge. We can't find replacements for those, so the plan is to put those up in matching, the ones that will match the ones that are down in the harbor. A streetlight that will go on top of the bridge, and it will be more like the ones down in the harbor.
And once they turn the blue lights on tonight, it looks very nice.
Yeah, yep. With sewer, Nate and I, Nate McLaughlin and I, with, met with representatives of both Camden and Rockland recently to talk about the future needs of the two towns, or the three towns. I think in both cases, we've worked really hard at building a better cooperative relationship with the towns. Rockland is interested in getting our, working towards getting an extension of our agreement worked out, and making it much, much simpler. There was another piece of, that they wanted to talk about, which had to do with, because of the industrial user portion of the, the agreement, and the state's industrial user permits and whatever is required, they wanted to clear it up so that it's up to the town of Rockport to enforce it, because they have no enforcement authority in the town of Camden, because we don't have a sewer district. So we're trying to develop some language that would just allow the town of Rockport to, if we had an industrial user, that Rockland could notify us, and we could enforce the action. But that'll come before the board and the sewer, the sewer commissioners, before that gets done, but we're starting to work on that. And also, we went over and met with Dave, is it, the Camden Sewer guy?
Bolshich.
Dave Bolshich, and met with him about the plans for their upgrades, and so now Nate is, is looking at that, so we will have a better idea of what's coming up, and so he can start to plan our, our, our funding options with, working with Megan, plan our funding options for the sewer, sewer department. Public Works crews have been working on equipment and gearing up for winter, as it's just starting now, it appears. The Beauchamp Point Rose was closed on Friday, as was the Marge Jones Ball Fields. Fire Department has been relatively quiet, it just seems like whenever I say that, it starts to pick up again. The chief has been attending a lot of training himself personally, and also working on keeping his officers, firefighters trained. The most recent training they did was a ladder training, which they use a lot in chimney fires, but they did a ladder training that was very successful. Holiday on the harbor, remember, everyone is set for Saturday, December 10th. This year, we have about 2,000 luminaries to put out and light in time for dark, and hopefully, it's gonna be good weather, right? It's gonna be cold, though.
Be cold, but it should be quiet.
But not the, not five below cold, like it was one year.
It'll be cold, you'll want your winter coat.
Oh, yeah. Yeah, I want my winter coat now.
Be the coldest day we've had so far this season.
Oh, great, on Saturday.
Yeah.
Great. Police Department, things are fairly quiet in the police department. One of the really neat things is in the cooperative agreement with the two towns, which we still have to figure out, you know, the, the payment of the piece of equipment, but we have a new piece of equipment that allows us to do a lot of really good data collection, and so they're hanging this piece of equipment. What's the thing called, Randy?
It's a multi-directional radar traffic count.
So it hangs on a pole, a light pole, and it sits there kind of innocuously, doesn't say anything about your, your speed, but it basically clocks people's speed in both directions for, you know, per hour during the day, so we can get a sense of if, if, if we're getting a lot of complaints on roads, whether people are actually speeding or not, and if they are speeding, we can start to target in on the area that, or the timeframe that there are speeders. If it hap, if it's happening at a particular time of day, we don't have to have a police officer sit there all the time. We can send the police officer over in a directed patrol and, and, and just put the police officer there when it's particularly busy or a dangerous time of day.
Is this our bit of equipment, or is Camden being gracious enough to let us borrow it for a little bit?
We made a joint purchase on this.
So it's a, it's a, it's, when you see the data from it, it's really, it's really useful data, for a bunch of reasons, because it gives you traffic counts also, so you can start to see with roads, how many cars are actually going on, in which directions at which time of the day, and it's, it's a lot of good data. There was one, the, the most recent road we did with is a lot of complaints, it doesn't, it didn't seem like, was it Park Street? That we just, you just sent me some data on?
Look back. You done that? When we're done, talk for a second.
Yeah, sure.
The unit we purchased is what's going to replace the old traffic counters with the tubes that go across the road. It's a much safer piece of equipment, because the officer just has to put it on a telephone pole. It's multi-directional, tells us hourly how many vehicles, it gives us the 85th percentile is what, what the speed of that road is. That's what's basically used for, if you need a speed adjustment in that area, the state would use what the vehicles travel at, the 85th percentile, so it breaks it all down. Gives us time of day, peak violation time, whether or not there is, it should be enforced or not. It's quite a piece of equipment, and when we bought it, both towns need it, because I get requests for speed details in both towns a lot, and to get the state to come in and do one, because the state regulates all the speed limits for even town roads, as you probably all know, gives us that good data. I have some roads where we get constant complaints of speeding, and when you can put that up and actually show people, and what I do is if somebody has called and wants a, wants this done, I email them the report afterwards, so they can actually see the data that we've collected, and anytime you want it, we can do that. We just did one on Park Street. That's the one Alan sent me today.
Right.
Alan Weaver from Camden is the one who sets that up for me in both towns, and does all the downloading and whatnot, sends it out, but useful, useful information.
Yeah, it's very...
And it does, I mean, it takes the argument out of, oh, these cars are going 100 miles an hour. Well, I can tell you that nobody's gone 100 miles an hour, but it will surprise you on some of these small streets of how fast the speed is going.
There was one street that, that, the other one previous to Park, that, was it, was it your road, South Street, that we did? it your road, South Street that we did?
We've, uh, we've hit Park Street, South Street, Rockville, Porter Street.
Yeah, there was one road that, that we put it out there and the speed was.
Considerably, yeah.
Considerably high, the average.
Yeah, it wasn't my road.
Yeah.
If it was, it was probably just you driving.
Someone else's road.
Yeah. But it's, typically it's the roads we freshly pave. It, they, people drive really fast on those roads, so we have a habit of going out there and collecting the information then.
We've paid for the, uh, unit in Camden, we just haven't billed you for it. But, uh, we'll have a joint agreement for that, uh, to be used and, uh, you know.
We're, we're working on the joint agreement now. We just wanna make sure that the, uh, Ginny's written the, her side of the agreement and so it's very, uh, one-sided towards Camden, so we're trying to work that out.
I didn't write the agreement.
Any sense of formal loyalty at all?
No, no loyalty at all, none, none.
That should go a long way.
It's all you, it's all you.
We'll, we'll work that out, it's.
And I'm sure that, uh, after we're talking about it tonight, I'll get requests from, uh, most of the streets in town, but, uh, you know, we can put it up short-term. Usually a three to four day gives you a very good idea. Like I said, it does take that guesswork out of, because it'll chart out and give you the, uh, peak violation time.
Is the plan to have this, this bit of equipment deployed almost three hundred and sixty-five days a year or only as needed?
Well, uh, it does have limitations, the batteries do get cold, uh, we have extra batteries so we can change it out. Probably not gonna get a lot of use out of it if it's getting covered with snow like tonight, but, uh, we can use it a lot. The, the problem we had with the old unit, we have a Jamar traffic counter with the tubes. Uh, you can use that right up till October, November, but occasionally, uh, we get snow in those months and if you've got the tubes stretched out across the road, the highway guys aren't gonna see them and they get plowed up. Uh, this is a lot safer, the officer doesn't have to enter the roadway to, to stretch tubes out or anything like that, he just puts it on the pole and, uh, records it right from there. It's downloadable right from, uh, where it's set up. We can take a laptop, download the information. He can download it and email it to me right, uh, right from where he's doing the traffic count, so.
It, it is an interesting tool when, when some people call in and say, oh my God, they're going so fast and the emotional aspect of a large truck, noisy truck coming at you seems twice as fast as a car when it's, could be well under the speed of the car.
Yeah, I mean, I, I have some streets in Camden, I get a lot of complaints and that's exactly what it is. An aluminum dump body trailer on a truck that hits a manhole cover shakes the whole truck, it sounds like they're going a hundred miles an hour. High Street in Camden, we get, it's notorious for speeding, but we get a lot of truck traffic complaints. They're big vehicles, they're in a compact area, they do look like they're going a lot faster than sometimes they are. But just the typical day-to-day, you know, the cars are flying through here, it can take some of that argue, and it can validate them as well, so.
No more questions, I'll sit down. And then the last item is after Holiday on the Harbor on Sunday, December 11th, I will be on vacation unless we have a big storm coming. And I can't fly out. But, uh, the hope is that after, uh, Holiday on the Harbor, I will be on vacation in sunny Florida. My wife is already out there, she got there today, it was eighty-one degrees.
Tough. I, I do have a suggestion for you. You, you mentioned in here that you will do your best not to check email all the time. Um, my thing is, you know, I think that you could forward like ten percent of it to a department head to let them deal with, five percent you answer and the other eighty-five you just forget about.
I, I made, I made it so that my phone.
You're on vacation, Rick.
I made it so my phone doesn't buzz every time an email comes in, so I don't sit there thinking, oh my God, I'm not doing my job. But I cha, I typically check in the morning and the afternoon.
Moving on. Okay. Any questions of the manager? Okay, unfinished business. We need to go to the unfinished business portion. We have back on our agenda discussion of clearing the title to the properties that were donated by Mary Louise Curtis Box Zimblis. Um, and it came to us originally back, I think, in July, I think. Okay, well, originally in fifteen, but, uh, was brought back to us earlier this year. In any case, I think we have a couple of other options that may be, uh, I asked Helen to come tonight, uh, in case we wanna pursue the idea of, of going through the whole process of clearing the, uh, title, but Rick, you have a.
Yeah, I spoke to Phil Saucier, our new, uh, attorney, and, uh, well, he agrees with, um, Bill Pluff's initial, um, uh, advice. He said there are a couple of cases that do make a little bit of change in, um, you know, how we could proceed with this, which would be to go to, to court for a declaratory judgment. Uh, there are two cases where, where the town went to court and asked for a declaratory judgment that they had, um, fulfilled the conditions of the, um, um, reverter clause and used the property as intended for a significant amount of time, enough significant amount of time, and the court ruled in both of those cases in favor of the town, um, in the favor of the town. And he felt that that would be a much, uh, uh, simpler solution than going to, you know, trying to track people down and, and all of that. He said that the, um, he felt that the, um, the option of, uh, of doing a, just doing a declaratory judgment would be pretty simple and straightforward.
Now, I'm gonna ask Helen to get up and, because she had an idea the other day that she mentioned to me and I'd ask her to explain this.
Okay. As Rick mentioned, Bill Pluff originally did a letter back in, let's see, it's dated November twenty-seventh, two thousand twelve, where he cites the issue, um, the statute, uh, Title Thirty-three, MRS-A, one-oh-three. And it occurred to me the other night that, um, a simple way which would not cost the town anything at all would be to have our local representative or senator submit a bill to change the statute. The, I'm not looking at him. You might wanna run it past, well, the reviser's office. If you, in your original packet from the, uh, last November, you should have a copy of the title. Down at the, basically the last sentence says, "The section shall not apply where both such fee simple determinable and such succeeding interest or both such fee simple and such right of entry are for public, charitable, or religious purposes, nor shall it apply to a deed, gift, or grant to the state or any political subdivision thereof." So if you change, and I don't know if you need to change the public or just the, or any political subdivision thereof, but you could delete the town out of that statute and therefore it, it solves the problem.
You know, if you recall, when this first came up, I think it was, uh, David Berry that mentioned that there was in-state law an exclusion that after a set number of years, I think.
Thirty years.
Yeah, I think he said seventy-five, but it was a shorter period, that it becomes null and void and, and whoever has it at that point owns it, but that was for private transactions.
Right.
Or transfers, did not, as it turned out. He thought at the time it included all such transfers, but we found out afterward it didn't include the mun, you know, ones to the municipals. And, you know, this could be just something, a simple correction to make them also included in that.
I guess I, I would just, I would be leery of, there's gotta be somebody else, someplace in the state who's gonna object to that for whatever reason because of a property or something like that.
Well, you should also have.
Timeline too is gonna be decently long versus I don't know what the timeline is on a court case, especially this type of one.
Yeah, declaratory judgment is pretty simple. You know, it just.
So I mean, that's still something that could and should be explored, but as far as which one would get done sooner, I think the court case may potentially get done sooner.
Right, and there's issues how fast you want, but you also have a representative to the main municipal associations, a legislative policy committee sitting in this room, and that's where you might potentially have some disagreement, but I don't think there would be any disagreement to a town having this, um, uh, statute changed. Definitely the most expensive way to do it is be to, to do a quick claim deed and track down those twenty-some people, some, some of whom live in California.
What's the, uh, I don't wanna interrupt you. I was just gonna ask, Rick, what's, what would be the timing on the declaratory judgment and the cost roughly?
I'd have to go back to town council and find that out.
And I guess the other question on that would be, would it help us at all in, in that process if we could get the people that we know that are local to, to write a letter and say, I support this.
The local areas.
You know, without having to, to go to California and to get all, all of them. If we could get the ones that we can easily get, does that support our case and is it worth doing?
He, he, his, uh, his comment to me was that if this is a direction the board, uh, wants to go in, that he will do some more work and do some more preparatory work and, and get us something firmer.
I'm very much in favor and have been since my first month on this board.
Completing your sentence of, in favor of doing this?
Of attempting to tie this, this, or button this, uh, this up, so we know a hundred percent that we could move the library in any place throughout the town, not that we would, we could still keep it there, but that we would know and be able to understand fully our options as it relates to that bit of property.
Well, library question aside, it, it strengthens the town's ownership position for the property. I think that's the bottom line for us.
So you thi, you want, consensus is that I should have him continue to look into this?
At least to get us a proposal of.
Yep.
You know, what, what it would cost. I mean, if, if he comes back and says it's gonna take three years and it's gonna cost a bunch of money, then we'll have a different discussion about it. But if he comes back and says it can be easily done and, then that would be good.
Point of issue, if you want your local state representative or senator to submit a bill, the cloture date is December thirtieth of this year. And then if it doesn't get in by then, you've gotta wait for the next session, which is two years.
Unless you make it an emergency.
Which is two-thirds.
Okay. Do we wanna direct Rick to keep in good contact with me and at the discretion of him, that if the lawyer comes back and says it's seventy-five thousand dollars in six months? I, I don't know, I'm just trying to figure out what are the parameters?
It sounded like it was really pretty inexpensive and it was an easy, fairly easy process as opposed to, it may just, if the court did rule in, in our favor, it may just strengthen the case for the, for the legislature to say, hey, look, the court's ruling in these favors, it, it, in favor this way, there's three cases, it's time to change the, the, it's time to amend the law to, to, um, be more in line of what, in what the court is saying.
But the only thing that I would wanna do after looking at that is just really trying to figure out the second and third layer repercussions. I think Jeff brought this up to me at some point, that, you know, what, what potential can of worms could we be opening by making this process good, bad, or indifferent, uh, for a lot of public places around the state that fall under these same provisions with deeds? But yeah, I'll take a look at it.
Okay. And normally that would be what would be coming before the legislative committee would be all the complaints about, oh, it's gonna do this and oh, it's gonna do that, so.
Yeah, but they don't have their name attached to it.
Okay. Unfinished business has been taken care of, let's move to new business. The first thing is to acknowledge a gift to the town. The Camden Seventh Day Adventist Church has made a donation in the amount of two hundred dollars toward the General Assistance Heating Fund. And I think it would be appropriate for us to recognize and thank them for that.
I move that we thank the Seventh Day Adventist Church for their generous gift of two hundred dollars toward the General Assistance Heating Fund.
Second. Moved and seconded. Discussion?
As long as they get a thank you card.
Yep. We'll have the town manager put her another thank you card. They're signing.
Is there one there for you to sign?
No, no, there's a, there's a, there's a copy of the check.
Oh. Yeah, just the copy of the check in there. Okay, all in favor? That is passed. Uh, we have no committee resignations, we do have two committee applications, one of who cannot be here this evening, so we can defer that until January. Uh, the other is before us tonight is Mr. Alexander Armentraut, who is here, if you'd come on up to the podium, please. Uh, he's applying to become a regular member of the ordinance review committee. Uh, he, his application is here before us as well as an endorsement. There was an endorsement, I think this is it.
Yeah.
That's completely different. You have, yes, I thought so, but it's not the one I got here. Okay, we, we do have an endorsement from Richard Remson endorsing his application. Um, Richard, I asked you to come here tonight because we have a couple of new members of the board who haven't met you in the past and I thought it'd be a good opportunity.
I don't think there's anybody on the board who hasn't met me before, in one fashion or another.
This may be a chance to clear up for the four worst part. Um, I know you have worked with the ORC for a number of years as.
Goes back more than ten years.
Yeah, just as a part, as an observer.
No, that's not true. I was the chair of that group for a number of years and vice-chair and other years for, I can't remember how many years now, but a quite considerable period of time.
But of late, you've just been an observer, commentator, gadfly.
Yes, yes, you could say that, yes.
Knife twister.
Right.
Yeah.
Well, I asked Alex to put his name in because at the last meeting of the ORC, we were down a couple of members and Alex comes to the meetings and, and I had asked him in previous years, but he had been going away for the winter and didn't wanna take up a committee spot, but he said he'd be here this winter. Alex keeps us honest. Um, he knows the ordinance quite well and, and asks a lot of what-if questions and I found him to be very open to actually changing his point of view for.
That's true.
For something that comes along.
In the face of powerful arguments, I've been willing to change my mind.
I, I heartily endorse him as a member of the ORC, I think he'd be a great addition.
Is this for a one-year period or for three?
I notice you.
It's an expired term.
Actually, there are two vacant ones, one expires in June thirtieth, twenty eighteen, and the other in twenty nineteen, according to the list that Stacy has provided to us tonight.
Yeah, the motion that we were given said twenty seventeen, but I'm happy to, as long as.
I, I committed for a year.
Okay, so just this season?
You know, through winter, through the, you know.
Through twenty seventeen, through next June.
Through the twenty seventeen season.
Okay.
Brendan or?
The reason, I, I mean, the reason for that's very simple, my plans next year are somewhat different than they are in two thousand seventeen, so.
Okay. Brendan or Owen?
I had a conversation with him and he emailed me and corrected me on some of my numbers, so, yeah, I'm, I'm, I'm impressed, I have zero issues.
I move to appoint Alexander Armentraut to the ordinance review committee with a term expiration of June thirtieth, twenty seventeen.
Second.
Moved and seconded. No further discussion?
What was the, what was the date?
Twenty seventeen.
Twenty seventeen.
June thirty, twenty seventeen. Uh, all in favor then of the appointment? Very good.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you for your service.
It ranges in six months.
Um, I was informed this evening that Maggie Timmerman Christie is not able to be with, here tonight. Two, two sick children. She has sick, sick children and, um, I don't think this is something urgent that we need to appoint.
Is it necessary that she be here in order to do the appointment?
I've spent enough time with her, I feel very comfortable voting on it.
I'm fine, quite honestly, yeah.
Well, wholeheartedly endorse her for the.
We've, we've been trying to, you know.
It's fine, I'm sure, it doesn't matter.
Encourage the people to be here, um, you know, if your preference is not.
Well, I, I think our institutional preference is, is. That's, that's fine. But in this particular case, with such strong recommendations, we can, we can, uh, get the full benefit of her talent earlier than otherwise.
She's got a good excuse, okay?
Well, she's appeared at several of our meetings to speak on different issues. Um, she was here for the conservation committee workshop, so I don't have a problem with moving forward with this.
What?
Always a good thing.
Okay, well, then I would accept the nominate, uh, a rec, uh, a motion, thank you.
I move to appoint Maggie Timmerman to the Conservation Commission with a term expiration of June thirtieth, twenty nineteen.
Second. Moved and seconded. Now, I know we have and, you know, I, I specifically asked Alex to be here tonight so we could all speak to him, but our preference is this. but our preference is this, so be it. Discussion further? Here and none, all in favor? And Megan can start her work right away. We now to the first major item on our agenda, and that is the Camden Rockport Pathways Committee presentation. I saw Mr. Scott come in and Mr. John, John, is here as well, I'm having trouble.
Call me Lenny.
Lenny. Yeah, my mouth is getting dry, Lenny. Uh, both are here, as is Helen Shaw, who's a member of the committee. Um, so, would you gentlemen come on up?
And Lynn McClancy.
That is correct, Lynn McClancy is also a member.
We are well represented here.
Usually, we don't get four members of a committee.
Seriously. That's because Pathways is awesome.
They are a good group.
They really are.
There's nothing in there for it.
You can get it online, you can get it on the website.
I wanna print that.
Yeah, I do, it's not, it's not linked.
It should be unlinked.
The link is bad.
It's two different operating systems, that's Mac.
Go right ahead.
Looks very sophisticated and complex, we have paper, that works. Uh, thank you for having us here tonight. Representatives of the Pathways Committee, Deputy Chairman, Vice Chair for Rockport. The membership for the committee is in great shape. I thought Maggie was going for Pathways, I see she's Conservation, it's like, she got poached! Have to work on that. What happened with that, Jeff?
She does list on her application that she wants to join Pathways too.
Oh, good!
Are you interested in serving in any other committees, Pathways?
Excellent, excellent. Then that'll take care of our last membership spot there. In the last year, we've been very, had a very good amount of progress, some changes on how we do some things in the committee. Uh, we started work, used, using work groups rather than just our regular committee meetings. They would, the hope, hope of progressing further along on the many projects that are going on, and I think we are seeing some very good results from that. Uh, in the last twelve months, we've, uh, we have opened the Seabright section of the Riverwalk in Camden. We had a nice opening ceremony in September. Uh, we held a public information set, session. We didn't hold it, but Jeff strongly encouraged Maine DOT to hold it, and it was very well attended on the Route One North project. Very good attendance in the Camden Town Offices. Also, Jeff was instrumental in getting the public information session together at Quarry Hill for that, for the Quarry Hill Route One Pathways, which was also very well attended.
Ridiculously well attended.
Yeah. Between the use of social media and press releases and group effort, I think the word's gotten out quite nicely. Uh, the result of that is there has been a lot more trails that are opening up around town. You saw the Hospital Trail that's opened up. We've got a bunch of new ones coming on in the next year that we hope we can all link to and map, map with. There's a lot of attention going towards bicycle and pedestrian pathways, and we're gonna make as much use of that enthusiasm as we can. Also, in the last year, we worked a lot with the National Park Service, Maine Conservation Corps, volunteers, and of course, the Camp, Parks and Recs Departments. So, in Rockport, we have been following the, the Hyde sidewalk issues, which you guys all have already spoken about tonight. We're disheartened but not less optimistic about the pedestrian crossing at Route ninety and Route one. We'll keep, continue to inform the public about how we got there and just to be patient with it. We talked about that. This week's, we're gonna be considering what projects do I recommend to the town for the next budget cycle. And we'll be getting, uh, we are starting a lot of initial input and discussions with the butters on the feelings for the Route One multipath and connecting Route one to the high school.
Route ninety?
Route ninety. Route one. Route ninety multipath, connect Route one to the high school, yes. So, would you like to talk about the master plan section?
Oh, for Camden?
Mm-hmm.
Sure.
Belly up to the bar, then.
Yeah, the, uh, the Camden Master Plan reflected originally, ten years ago, the Rockport Master Plan, and there's been a significant effort at rewriting it, uh, which is sitting in my inbox to, uh, to sort of tighten up. The other major part always of the master plan is, uh, are the recommendations within the town of Camden for priorities, priority projects, which is also, uh, the major part for Rockport too, which you're looking for and look for annually. And we are, not only in Camden but in Rockport, we're very invested in the process where we give our input to Public Works, isn't, wouldn't that be? Where do you want that, where do you want that input?
For?
If we say, we recommend that if there's a major capital project that, uh, for pedestrian ways, we suggest Russell Ave., you know, or whatever it is.
It would go through Public Works and eventually to Megan. She just texted me saying she needs budget information now.
So, she'll go through Mike?
Yeah, Mike.
Send it to Mike?
Mike, and then to, he'll get it to Megan.
Okay, all right, so that, that'll be the process. And I, I thought it'd be that way because in Camden it's to Rick, so.
Rick Seibel.
What's that? Yeah, Seibel.
Rick Seibel.
Yeah. So, that'd be about it. I think, uh, I don't want to, uh, sort of gloss over the Route One North project is very, the reconstruction is a very large project, and it may have precedence for other sections of Route One construction. And it, it won't bear on the Maritime Farms section, which is pretty much going all right. Um, I will, I will say that, Jamie, that, that, uh, that was a memo from you that you wrote about? That was, I thought. Okay, so we're not talking about that?
Yep.
All right, we'll talk about that later.
Those words back.
Yeah, I won't dwell on that anymore, I forgot. Uh, we also applied for, uh, a couple of, uh, grants, uh, People for Bikes Grant, which we wrote to, we didn't get it. Uh, we are pretty confident that the next R T P grant that we wrote for, for another section of the Riverwalk in Camden will be awarded. Pretty sure, so don't put that in the paper, you're not paying attention anyway. All right, um, and I did wanna, uh, just, uh, also say that, uh, Erickson Farm added, you know, their walking path this year too. So, there's a lot of energy, there's the Erickson one, and there's the, the hospital.
The new one at the hospital.
I guess it wasn't last year, it was last, it was the year before.
Yeah. The new one at the hospital is busy quite, quite a lot on weekends. This weekend, it was packed.
It was.
Yeah.
So, yeah, it was really well done. I think, uh, Gartley designed that one. Yeah, Gartley and Dorsky.
One thing that I'd just like to say, because both of those paths, um.
They had nothing to do with us.
But at the same time, we were kept in the loop. The Pathways Committee was consulted on the Erickson Farms one, about what they were doing, um, because word kind of got out that this is a high-functioning committee that really follows through on a lot and has a lot of good professionals on it. So, it's been enjoyable seeing other organizations come and ask for time to present what they're doing to the Pathways Committee, so word got out and, and, you know, a lot of the land use organizations around have, have been consulting with Pathways and keeping good relationships.
Yeah, the, I, the Erickson Farm thing, I believe, started when I was actually the liaison and you were a member of that committee, because they came and said, "We're thinking about doing this, you think it's a good idea?" And I think that's tremendous for people to come in and, and to have that committee have that kind of stature that, oh, you know, if they say it's not a good idea, we're not gonna do it. But to get the buy-in from the committee, and that's, that's excellent representation of citizens.
The hospital, when they did their ribbon cutting or rope cutting, uh, was very excited that Pathways members were there as part of the rope cutting and wanted to talk about future collaboration, so it's, it's a great committee, I'm, I'm really proud of them.
One of our purposes, besides building the paths or building the trails, is to inspire others to do it for us. And I think we're having some considerable amount of that. Uh, we do have been approached by a few private landowners who are working on stuff of their own, and that we hope the next year or so that we'll see a lot more of this kind of enthusiasm, because I do think it helps the area considerably, especially with people who are visiting.
There was, uh, uh, one other, uh, sort of landmark, uh, project, which is where we got Coastal Mountains Land Trust to give an easement to the town of Camden, so the, for the construction of, uh, a section of the Riverwalk. And that, uh, I think that this, the Select Board has actually discussed perhaps strategies for how that can occur, because ultimately, as the facilities for pedestrians grow, there's gonna be more and more private property that could potentially be impacted. And that's clearly gonna be the case, uh, on the, on our major project, which is what we're turning our energy to on Route ninety, uh, and just talking informally to the butters and trying to get an idea of what the issues are and trying to get that rolling. But you'll, you'll be hearing more about the Route ninety project in the next couple of years. That's the one that, that we're leaning into now.
I've got two project questions. Um, are you involved with the Ragged Mountain Circular Path or whatever it's called? It came before us.
Round the mountain.
Round the mountain.
Yeah, round the mountain, thank you.
Yeah, um, we try to, uh, put a fence around what we are involved with and what we're not involved with, and, um, our mission is to create connections between destinations. Uh, and we're not a recreational path. Uh, we don't do, um, physical ed things, we don't do training, we don't do trails that are for scenic. We do connections, and that's why the Route ninety is on our radar, it's why we didn't do Erickson, although we actually advocated with, uh, the folks there to consider connecting to, uh, the top of Beach Hill, which would be really cool. And the effort out there, uh, the Round the Mountain Trail and actually to John Anders, uh, Midcoast Nembah, I don't know what it's called, New England mountain biking.
Bike Association.
Yeah, Nembah and, and his work, he's just done a phenomenal amount of work building single-track trails that people walk on, run on, and ride bikes on in that area. Just amazing, sort of hooks into the Round the Mountain Trail.
And our, and our goal will hopefully be to connect up there from down here.
Mm-hmm.
We do have a lot of people who come to town with bicycles.
Yeah. And the other one was, and you, you briefly men, just, you mentioned in passing, what about Chestnut Street, Russell Avenue connection? And I'm, I'm, I'm saying that because, again, this summer, I saw a lot of people out there walking at all times of the day and night, and not always with reflective gear in the evening, and it really winds at a couple places.
If I, I don't have it in front of me, but I believe if you go to the master plan, that it would, it lists out, uh, in priorities there.
Well, my concern is, is Camden's.
But it's not coming up in the next year too.
Yeah, but is Camden's.
Camden is not looking at that.
Well, yeah, but is they gonna be connected with the Rockport Plan, the two master plans?
Oh.
Are they gonna be in sync, that's my.
Oh, absolutely, absolutely.
Okay.
Yeah, that's the key is, is, you don't have it here, but the priorities, if you look at the, the list of priorities that Camden has, the top ones, and I should've mentioned those, um, the top ones are the Maritime Farms project to keep that going, the Route One project, to keep an eye on that. Uh, and then secondarily, there are things like, uh, the Russell Avenue, which is Chestnut, um, and consideration for that, but it's not a top priority. Rather, there was a greater amount of interest in these discussions about improving the, uh, mobility impaired access to all of facilities that exist in Camden. There are a lot of, um, sidewalks in Camden, not unlike the one that's, uh, on, that, the poles, the utility poles just got moved.
Yeah.
On Route one, so those.
Yes.
There, the big challenges are the utility poles. And in lieu of moving the utility poles, there's actually discussion now about building these half-moon sections uh, around, and so you actually widen the, uh, the sidewalk around the, uh, the utility pole, and it creates more of a meandering look to the sidewalk too, which is kinda nice. And it's a cheaper solution, and also helps with the plow, and you don't deal with the secondary issues of moving utility poles, and then all of a sudden, you have to change the canopy, uh, issues, and you're cutting back trees, and people don't like that, and.
I, I was just concerned that they are linked, and so that if one moves up in priority, the other one moves with it.
Well, I was mentioning the utility poles because as the issue was here, the issue is there, and that's that in-sync thing.
And the committee is very well-balanced. And keeping an eye on each side to make sure that we're not working against each other, for one thing, so we're going in the same direction.
And I do wanna applaud the committee, because everybody works on both towns with the same amount of energy, it's great, it's just great. It's just considered, you know, a pathway project.
And I'd also like to recognize, um, Pathway specifically, as far as having A D A and folks that don't get around like everyone else does, at the forefront of what it is. I mean, with, uh, with the telephone poles, with their steps in a walkway that aren't A D A compliant. When they do Riverwalk things, it's all A D A compliant. So, you know, in addition to connectivity for the able-bodied from destination to destination, those that aren't as able-bodied, wheelchair-bound, um, parents and the rest such are very much a part of what we talk about.
That's a point well taken, Bill, thank you for reminding us about that. What are you looking at there that, Jamie's drawing, oh, that's the next section.
He's moving ahead.
To keep things moving like that, keeping that section of the budget for us is important, and so.
Well, you're meeting on Wednesday, right?
We do meet on Wednesday, yes.
First Wednesday of the month.
Get that information.
Basically, that's the sum total of the budget request, which is to keep the reserve funds coming.
Keep, that is it, that is it. But other than recommending any maintenance, uh, to existing structures, we will do that, set that priority, which we, we've already done the homework on, so we'll just clarify that.
Mm-hmm.
We did that in the sidewalk survey, which we also did for Camden.
Just, uh, this is totally off the subject of Pathways, actually. But I'm intrigued because you had such high participation in your stakeholder meetings for the Quarry Hill sidewalk and Route One sidewalk, and you talked about outreach and social media and things like that. I wonder if perhaps, Lenny, since you're the Rockport resident, if you could spend a little time with our town manager and just brief him on what you're doing, because we have communication issues on other things in town.
That's always. He follows me on Facebook.
They use Facebook a lot.
But it would be interesting to, to, to hear that strategy, because it may be useful in other, other parts of our communication.
And one thing about Quarry Hill is, we, we went to an area where people lived. So, about half of them were residents of Anderson Inn, but, I mean.
But you did sound like you did draw on people from other areas too.
We did, we do.
I just, I just would like to mine that knowledge a little bit, if it's possible.
Between the use of social media, press releases, um.
Email.
Email lists.
We use everything.
Yeah.
One big thing was just sharing all at the same time. Everyone on Facebook that we, as part of our, uh, the committee meeting, you know, you create it and we'll all share it like bananas, and it works well.
We post it on our Facebook page, and then everybody shares it.
Lots of pretty pictures.
Never write more than a page.
That's right.
I share it all the time.
Okay.
I think then we're done with this part, and we will move directly into the.
I'll just plug that the meeting is here at Rockport this month, on Wednesday. If you're interested in attending, it's, uh, at the town.
And there will be cookies.
That's another thing about this committee, there's always treats. It's great, nothing against the kisses, but like, they're cookies, they're gonna make cookies.
Now you know why the participation is so high.
Orange Kit Kats, you know? We have fun, we have a good time. I know you guys won't go far while this budget thing coming up. Please, sir, uh, I mean, it looks like it's gonna be on screen anyhow, but.
We have an update regarding the sidewalk that has been on the drawing board since, I think it was like two thousand and twelve. To extend it from effectively where it leaves off at Camden Street and Elm in Camden, to bring it all the way down past Maritime Farms to what used to be known as Leonard's, now is, um, Loyal Biscuit, I believe, with a crosswalk, with lights and everything at the Hannaford, at the entrance to the Hannaford Mall. So, um, Jamie has some updated information, we've got new numbers from the state. And Jamie can walk us through. We've got new numbers from the state and Jamie can walk us through this.
I just want to clarify one thing. MDOT is very clear about this. It goes all the way to the entrance of Quarry Hill. The project starts at the entrance of Quarry Hill.
Oh.
Not at Camden Street.
Oh, I thought there was already a sidewalk that came there.
A little bit. They're going to prove that, they're going to fix that up.
Oh, okay.
You with Jeff?
Thank you. Jamie Franco-Mano from the Planning and Development Department. I'm also really happy to be involved with this Pathways Committee. I think it's a productive group. So, yeah, yeah, we, we work on some good stuff. And what I will focus on is the budget implications of this proposal from MDOT and give a little bit of the history. Rick also covered this in his manager's notes in the packet. We had a joint application for funding assistance in 2012 with a somewhat informal budget that Rockport Public Works put together for $167,000 way back when. It's only five years ago, but many of the unit prices went up and more importantly, the whole sort of range of specifications of how wide is the sidewalk, what, what are the limitations on grade and a few other things changed the unit prices considerably over that time. But that doesn't explain all by itself how the budget changed from 167,000 in 2012 to 596,000 currently. Some of the big ticket items that have been added include a realignment of the intersection of Camden Street and Elm Street, I guess at that point it's called, or Commercial Street in Rockport. And this is something on the Camden side that they've wrestled with quite a bit from John Street and Conway. Basically, MDOT's saying is something's going to have to happen first if, if, you know, no one's come up with a great master plan to solve the whole intersection. So what's proposed is that our end of Camden Street will turn, bank towards the left a little earlier and come out across from the old entrance to what was, I believe, a restaurant? Yeah, at that point. And intersect more in a, in a 90 degree angle with Commercial Street. At that point, if you are, say, exiting John Street and wishing to come into Rockport on Camden Street, you would turn right, proceed about one or two car lengths and sit on Commercial Street facing south with your left hand turn signal on to get into Camden Street. Nobody's particularly happy with any solution, but that one would have a traffic calming effect because there'd be a reason to stop and it would bring other problems to light, you know, including people trying to sneak around in the, in the shoulder. So the pathway that is proposed or sidewalk would actually eat up a lot of that space where cars now sneak around on the side so that the shoulder would be very much diminished. It's a relatively comprehensive solution, but it certainly doesn't address future uses of the old filling station and where the restaurant is and all the, all that stuff. So in, in the Pathways Committee's recommendations, we said to MDOT, surely that could wait. This could be a future phase of work. But MDOT is fairly insistent on, on improving the whole length of the route that you see in this drawing. And secondly, MDOT insists on continuing the path, let's go all the way to the bottom of the drawing, Jeff, to, to Loyal Biscuit or 46, 56 Commercial Street in this phase because that is what was proposed in that 2012 grant proposal. And somewhere or another, they are measured on overall length feet. So in order to push back on that, if the, if one or both Select Boards is having trouble with this budget and says to MDOT, this is a luxury we don't need, there would have to be a new level of communication back and forth with that agency. We have worked very well with Orel Gornau, the representative, and found him very reasonable, but he, he's got a limit to where he can go. And so again, if, you know, if somebody knew a member of the legislature who wanted to influence events in Augusta, we could attack this. But we are proceeding on the assumption that the budget is, right in front of you, $596,000.
So if you weren't finished.
I'm almost finished. The matching funds required from the town are 20%. So in raising the budget a great deal, MDOT is also raising their share a lot more than ours. They are the 80%. And the breakdown is based on a, the first amount due being in February 2018. So that is in the budget that you are working on now and that would start July 1, Febru, July 1, 2017. But the next payment in the second column would be in the next fiscal year. It would be July or later. And that's how we mapped out the required matching funds. The ratio you see here is based on that 2012 grant application. So assuming the Camden Select Board is comfortable using that going forward, it was a very rough proportional basis, you know, for length feet in Camden and length feet in Rockport. So it, it hasn't changed from that perspective, but then some of the improvements are more expensive than they used to be in different places. So if that holds true, I think it would be helpful for this Select Board to give some guidance to Pathways and to send a message to the Camden Select Board or to firm up the date of the next joint meeting with the Camden Select Board so that we have buy-in on both sides for this budget. The reason that I asked the Pathways Committee and their many members here to stay tuned for this presentation is that Pathways Committee, I think, has a very strong consensus, and if we needed to vote on it, we would on Wednesday, that of course you should spend all of the Pathways Committee reserves on this project. It might not be the top priority, but it is the most ready to proceed. And so in Rick's memo, or rather in his notes, he mentioned that you would be wiping out the Pathways Reserve, but still having to raise funds in the, in the next fiscal year, the one you're budgeting for now. I'm not 100% sure that's correct because if you continue putting aside 5,000 a year into this reserve, we would make it through this first number, 25,213. So you would, you would be ready to make the payment in the neck, in the coming fiscal year, but there's certainly a lot of money to be raised to meet that second year.
But it seems to me before the commitment is made that, that both boards, Camden and Rockport have to know what the end number is and how we get there regardless of the strategy.
And this is, this is still in engineering. The bud, the, the number can move around considerably and then it will be put out to bid and we'll move again. So nobody is trying to predict the future down to the last dollar, but it's important to make a commitment of this magnitude and based on the numbers we know today.
I'm trying to understand the intersection with Camden Street. Are you saying that now that the, the proposal that MDOT is coming forward is, includes a major reconstruction of that intersection? And so that was not the case before?
That's right.
Okay, so that's.
It achieves a few things. It narrows the throat of that intersection, if you will, so that pedestrians have a shorter trip across. It improves the alignment for drivers, as I mentioned already, the turning movements. And no one knows if it will be, you know, perfect.
And will there be a land taking there?
There is, there are right of way issues that MDOT is resolving in its normal manner. Yep.
And I guess then the other question from a Rockport point of view is if that adds a lot of costs to the project, do we need to reexamine how the, the two towns are sharing the costs? Because, you know, that, because that intersection is in Camden.
One of the difficult things may be how the grant application was written in the beginning. I'm with you, but as, I, I believe there was a cost breakout in the beginning, but at the same time.
Didn't include this.
We've adjusted all the numbers, so.
Didn't include this. And so I'd be interested in finding out about that. And I'm also interested in the, in the idea that the unit costs have gone up because it seems to me the cost of asphalt in those, that period of time has calmed down. So I don't know, I guess I'd have a hard time understanding what unit costs we're talking about that are going up.
I, I think that when this was first proposed, it was proposed more as just a simple sidewalk, three to four feet wide, and now it's at six feet.
It's much more on the specs than it is on the units, yeah.
And that's, I mean, if we're getting a better product, then I'm, that's, that's a reason to pay more money.
We are getting a phenomenally more well thought out and nothing against Rockport Public Works and the people, they were asked to do a job to apply for a grant and they did that job and they did it very well. And then when we finally, Pathways got a hold of it, it expanded over time and not necessarily thinking that MDOT was going to be as gracious as it turned out they were in continuing to up the budget and continuing to hold true to the 80/20 split out. So what we have is what I think is, is just a, a very nice sidewalk that connects a pretty difficult bit for Camden, but also does extend along. And the, the breakout of Camden is paying more is because there's more linear feet. But as you're saying, Ken, yeah, the, the intersection does add a bit to the cost.
I don't believe there was a crosswalk at Hannaford in the original budget either. So that's a new amenity for Rockport. And the bus stop improvements are significant.
Right.
But the, you know, the, the, another issue is timing. Orel, Orel Gornau, the representative, has said to us, if, if we're in January and February and still not decided, that, that that's going to eat up the rest of the design budget, keeping the engineer kind of involved. And there are other reasons why. I hope that the two Select Boards will just stick to the ratio from the earlier application and not nickel and dime each other because we don't actually have, you know, the skills or the manpower to break it out again without additional costs.
Now, on the realignment of Camden Street, is it just sort of bending the intersection a little sharper or is it cutting across so it lines up with where Conway, I think it's called Conway Road comes out?
Yep.
Does it line up with the, with Conway or is it just lining up in the middle of the subway?
If you were, I'm sorry, I didn't get this. I actually do have the, the, the engineering plans, but first of all, it doesn't require any taking of land. Basically, they're close, the, the objective, if you think about it, is it's a long way to cross, for a pedestrian to cross, so they're narrowing that. And the way they're narrowing it is if you're take, if you're going northbound on Route One, you come to the first turn, they're going to make that a little bit sharper and then they're going to, then the next, the next curb that you come to, they're going to bring that out a long ways to do what Jamie said is make you have to turn to face 90 degrees as you come from Camden Street to enter Route One. So you're just going to be turning. So they're filling in, they're basically going to put a, a bump out there, like a pedestrian bump out so that they have a landing place.
So they're not going to eat into that piece of property?
No, it's actually.
That has an abandoned house in it.
Yeah, if you look at it here, this is pretty simple. If you just think about it, this, it's going to be like this. This land is going to come out like this.
All right.
That triangle is going to be filled in. I don't think it's a, I don't know if it's a lot of money. The, I did, I do have, I think you've got it too, Jamie, this general breakout, like, like the signal is $100,000, $110,000. That was not in the grant.
The signal down by Hannaford.
Yeah, that's $110,000. And we are, we've talked to them about that.
Tried to because they were going to do a replacement, right?
They are, they.
Light upgrade.
They were going to do a light upgrade to one of those galvanized pole things. And now they've agreed to just do whatever, what's there now, which is the cable. So that's.
And wooden posts.
Yeah, and wooden posts. So that's going to save some money on the, the signalization and the.
There still is the, the crosswalk signals and buttons to push and things like that.
Yeah, that's the $100,000. That's $110,000, according to this. So that wasn't included. I think what the, the strategy was that we were hoping that that would be included in the upgrade of the signal after the sidewalk was there. And it was, it's still our understanding that that signal, that's intersection is scheduled to be upgraded just like the Route 90 and Route One is. And we keep saying that at every meeting, why don't we take this off and, and do it then? But.
It could be that in absorbing their 80%, as the budget has grown.
That's, that's what they're thinking.
MDOT is lumping that in.
Yeah, they're thinking that. And there's another one that is, is small, but maybe not so small. There was overwhelming support in that Quarry Hill meeting to get some kind of pedestrian activated signal to allow people to cross the street to.
Elm Street Diner, Elm Street Grill.
Is that what it's called?
Yeah.
Is that it?
Yeah, that's, yeah.
It's the hotel. At Cedar Crest, it's a Cedar Crest pizza place. They all go there and they have to drive to go there. And, and so they want a way to just activate it. And that's like $7,000, $8,000. We are going to approach them to do a, a solar driven one rather than have to put in all the utilities to power an electric one.
There's no stoplight there.
There's no light there.
There's no stoplight.
The speed limit allows four.
One of those things that is, is the blinking thing.
It doesn't, it doesn't stop traffic, but it alerts you that somebody's going to be crossing.
And man, the, that would be, you know.
It does have the advantage of being at the crest of a hill, which gives it good visibility.
You see those in, I saw those in England. They've got a mark crosswalk, but the traffic goes and you.
There's one of them, there's one of them at the state park, exact same thing at the state park.
One of them figures prominently into our aspirations for Route 90, but again.
Exactly.
That is a preview for next year. So we have this not to exceed number, basically is what I'm telling you.
I mean, I'm in strong support of the project because I think it's, it's a public safety issue for the people at the bus station. I think it's going to improve the walkability of the communities, but, so I, and I want to move forward and, and where we're getting a better product than the original grant suggested we would as far as the width of the sidewalk and the quality of it and things like that, that's all good. But I would like to at least have the questions asked about the budget along the way because we are sitting here representing the taxpayers of Rockport. We have a project that we've, you know, had, had a certain cost and now it has a higher cost. I think it's probably worth it.
Another way to put that budget, and Owen touched on it, but if you ask Steve Beveridge in 2012, what would it take to do this? Steve would say, I could get it done for X, you know? So he wasn't looking at it as like, I'm MDOT.
I understand, but I think, I think it's worth asking, it's worth asking the questions. And I'm not, I don't, I'm not going to stand in the way of, you know, progress here because I think it is progress and I want to see the project get done. But, but just to ask the questions, I think is not unreasonable.
Okay.
It's not, it's not a higher budget, it's three and a half times the budget.
Yeah, it's huge.
And, and I still, I, I don't, I don't, I'm not opposed to any of this, but I still don't understand how, I mean, chunks like a $100,000 light. Like now, now I'm starting to understand how we got there. How else did we get there?
Width.
Well, you doubled the width the whole way through. And your, and your materials are probably different.
So, and, and tell me about that process. How, how, how did that happen?
An amazing amount of back and forth with Orel.
My guess is Steve went out and just measured linear feet and multiplied it out by, you know, by the linear feet, X number of feet wide.
I guess I'm actually less interested in how they came up with the original number and more interested in being certain that what is being proposed now is the correct and responsible thing and not totally overkill.
Okay, so the Pathways Committee was mainlined in to the design process. MDOT hired an engineer, that person is responsible to MDOT. This is not your classic locally administered project. This is, MDOT is designing the project. At the top of the, at that heading here, this is the, you know, now defunct grant program that was what we were applying under in 2012, this QCP transportation enhancement thing. The, the committee was involved, the engineer was responsive, but also there were a number of places where Orel pushed back based on limits from his perspective because he can't have it be called a pathway. He, he'll tell the world he's building a sidewalk. But we. But we, uh, negotiated for specs that we think were responsible. And the, you know, it bears very little resemblance to that initial budget, but the, the quality control is there, in my opinion. And I think another problem with this project has been the turnover in my office. There's so many people who were involved in this application, including Brian Hodges on the Camden side, who just aren't around anymore. So Orel was sitting on this project for a long time without a, a parent buy-in from the towns. And what, the question you might ask is, what happens if we don't agree? With the one hundred and sixty-seven.
We being Camden Towns.
Either of the select boards. Is, but in particular Camden, because Orel is responding to the Camden Town Manager as the main point of contact. But if we don't get there to this number, the, the time and the, uh, engineering services that would go into dialing it back and the, the, I'm not even clear that there will be a project at a hundred and sixty-seven thousand dollars. Like, that's a sort of a figment of the past, because the, Orel is saying, no, you can't just do the Hannaford intersection and the bus stop, and, and you're done with your money. You have to commit to this whole length feet in order to get to eighty-twenty. So your question is, never mind the alternative, why is this a good idea? And I hear you. The quality control has been elevated throughout, and I'm confident we have good product here. But it's, it's way far off from what expectations were in two thousand twelve. And that is a challenge for, um, for optics, if you will. But public participation was good, the committee focus was good, and the feedback and the number of rounds of feedback with MDOT and the committee has been excellent.
Jeff, is this on the Camden Select Board pit parade? Are they picking this up or?
Don's been, talk about, Don's been very involved. When I got onto Pathways, Ken, was there ever a Camden Select Board liaison when you were liaison?
Leonard was the liaison, and he attended occasionally.
And Don has really stepped up and has become very involved, and I think is, is, is pretty passionate about seeing this project move forward too.
He's very supportive, and I, Brendan, I wanted to, I, I'm, I'm searching, I'm comparing the, I'm trying to get to your answer here. For instance, Steve put in four thousand dollars or six thousand dollars of drainage, and the spec is coming in at a hundred and ten thousand for drainage. And, uh, there's just a couple of big culverts that they're replacing that go under the, under the road, I think, or something that they have to do, down by Conway House.
By Country Inn and whatever that antique place is, yeah, drops off big time on the.
So they have to do that. I, I, I could send you what I've got, that's all I'm doing is looking at the comparison.
It would be helpful to have.
Yeah, I'm happy to do that. I, and I'm just looking through it in that way. So it's underestimating, it's the Steve, Steve did that.
And can you guys talk me through the portion of the, the pathway that goes beyond the bus stop?
Uh, on which way? Northbound or southbound?
Southbound.
So on the south side?
I understand that MDOT has a dog in the fight about how long this thing is.
It's because, let me, let me address that first.
I would start with this focus.
Yeah, let me, let me address that first. So, uh, because I spoke to, uh, Steve Landry at MDOT about this specifically. He's sort of the next level up, uh, and requested whether there would be a possibility to take and reduce the, the amount of the construction by shortening the length of the project. That would do it right away, just not as much work, right? But he was pretty, he was clear, and I understand his, his rationale, that, uh, if, if they don't respond, the grant was given for a certain linear footage, for a certain construction. And if they start saying, well, okay, we're not going to do that, we're going to do this, then it's undermining the whole grant process, and we would prob, we wouldn't receive anything.
I understand that, but you guys talk about optics. We're, we're talking about a project that's three and a half times the budget. And would it be fair for me to say we're talking about a long length of very well-built sidewalk?
Eighteen hundred feet.
That our community is going to believe is not going to get used?
I have much better utility when it's finished.
Am I overstating the concern here?
The next place.
Our, our community is not going to care what your original grant length was. They are not going to care.
Right.
They are going to care that the budget is three and a half times what it was, and they are going to see a length of sidewalk with nobody on it.
That, that length beyond.
Unless, unless there will be people on it.
There won't be people on it, I don't know if you've spent any time.
No, no, I haven't, that's, I really am asking, I'm not, I'm, I'm not judging, that's why.
Now they're dragging their suitcases alongside.
I, I have seen that, actually, yeah.
Those are the ones, and when you say whether, whether it's the community that's using it, eh, it might be tourists and visitors and things like that, yeah.
I mean, that, that's fine, I, people using.
If you enter our master plan and our priority list, you'll see this is part one.
Okay.
The rest of it is to connect Route Ninety.
Okay.
Yeah, which, you know, when we were, when we were presenting at, uh, at Quarry Hill, or when MDOT was presenting, uh, some of the people there were, uh, business owners further down, asking right now, when is the rest of this going to be done? They want it.
Further down than this even includes?
Yeah, they want it going all the way down.
Excited about two point oh.
Because they see the connection.
I, I have been told, I have not seen it, but I've been told that during the summer at least, there are students that go to, uh, main media workshops, get off the bus and walk south and then cut up through their field.
Definitely seen the people dragging suitcases.
And there's, there's folks that work on the boats in, in Camden, they do the same thing going north. You know, they come off the bus and they drag their duffel bags.
And so all the way down is Ninety, is.
The, the, the end goal is Ninety.
Yeah. And everyone that stops in at Country Way and stays at Country Way has an accessible, you know, safe walking place to a lot of different destinations and country ways on our end.
Okay, a question to Rick. Have you gotten any feedback from Pat as to when they want to have that joint meeting in January?
No, not at all, I just texted her again, just. Just moments ago.
She's in a meeting, I think, right now.
Yeah, is, do they have a meeting too?
Uh, yeah, I just came from that.
Oh, okay.
Well, Jeff, can you take us back up to the north end? Can you take us back up to the north end?
Hey, Rick, yeah, you mean the joint one?
Yeah.
So can you guys talk me through, um, impact on, what's going on with that gas station right now? They're ripping up the tanks now, right? Is there?
McTex.
Who's doing it, and what are they doing, and?
I think the property's for sale.
Yes, been for sale for a while.
They have to take it out for liability reasons.
For environmental reasons, they have to remove the underground tanks.
And then also that, that green plot that used to have the Chinese food on it? That's, that's a, what I would refer to as a pretty highly covetable, developable site at some point in the future. I just don't know what Camden's going to do with it, but.
Well, Hannaford owns it.
Oh, that's right, that's right, Hannaford owns it.
And they have a vested interest in not necessarily having something there.
Ah.
Oh, and by the way, Hannaford was at the Quarry Inn meeting too, and very supportive.
Yep.
They were talking about building infrastructure on their property to connect in.
We got a guy from Scarborough, Scarborough to come up, from corporate. And he actually was, helped reduce some of the costs and some of the things we were scratching our head about maritime farms. He was, he was really, yeah.
So do we need to take any action on this at this point, other than to say, keep moving?
The, the gold star would be a, a, a vote and at this, and take this as a not to exceed number. But I don't know how you do that going into a budget process. The, how do I make a handoff to another select board? Supposing it's not at a joint meeting, but that I've go from this one to that one and say, I got a message from Rockport.
Because Orel's last email kind of led me to believe that he really was looking for, because from him on his end, he's also upped their budget three times, the thing. So he's really looking for the commitment to try to look good in his office.
What we could do is take a consensus of the board, a census of what we think we want, but defer the last action until we meet with the Camden Select Board, so we're both on the same page at the same point in time.
I'd like to hear, I'd like to have the benefit of their perspective.
In this, in that case, Bill, silence doesn't mean consent, do you know what I mean? You're not, you're not giving them something that could go forward. You're saying we must meet again.
Either way, you know, if we do nothing, we're still waiting. If we just take a, a sense of the board, it's still not a vote to approve it until we meet with them.
The alternative would be to say, if Camden meets us at this number, we got a deal.
Do we think we might have? Do we think we're good with the, with the total of forty-five thousand and change?
Good as in it, it won't go in over that, or good as in it's something we can sell or?
Accept this and move forward if we have the agreement with Camden, that they're going to pay their end and not look for changes.
Take into account the, I, what I would call the sacrifices, uh, by Pathways on their end to, to really try to pony up whatever monies that they've built up to try to see this go forward, because this would be a really cool thing.
What you're really doing is, I think the question is, is this a deal breaker? You were, it doesn't sound like you're saying, this is off the table, we're not interested in that.
If we knew it was off the table, there wouldn't be any point in talking to Camden.
Right, but it's so.
You want to talk to Camden.
Right, so you want to talk to Camden, it's, it's worth discussing, it's worth moving forward. I think that's where, where we need to get to, is that it's, you know, this, that number isn't one that's going to, in itself, kick it off the table.
Okay.
Can we take a vote on behalf of our town in a joint meeting?
We have to have, we have to have separate meetings.
It has to be another meeting after that.
Separate from them and take our vote.
And, and from a time perspective, we either do it at the next meeting, or if, for instance, well, whichever, whichever body was hosting the meeting, the other body would have to return to their town to, to the vote?
No, I don't think so.
Is placement in, in issue?
What do you mean, geography?
It's a public meeting, anybody's, you know.
Yeah, we, we don't hold public meetings on the moon.
Can't both be in the same town at the same time.
Did that last email say, what was it, Orel's drop dead date?
Point, I don't, I don't know the answer to that, but we will have a meeting on the fourth Monday of January.
But, I mean, I mean, considering, considering that somebody has to go first, I think, it, it, I'm willing to make a motion on it to not to exceed forty-five oh five eight.
I'd second that.
Um, so I'm going to make a motion to, um, fund this, uh, proposal from town funds and, and parenthetically, pathway funds for a figure not to exceed forty-five thousand fifty-eight dollars.
Second.
I don't know, can we make a motion to commit money we haven't budgeted?
Well. We're, we're making a motion to commit it, we then budget it.
Yeah, but we, I don't know. I mean, I, I was thinking, I was thinking more in terms of a motion of expressing strong support for the project and to direct the town manager to continue to work with Camden to come up with the final budget numbers or something like that. How do, how do people feel about that? I'd, I'd rather not hang a number on it right now.
I'm not at strong support for the project myself personally yet. I'm not saying I won't get there, um, but it, it, I think we're in the discussion section of a motion right now.
Yeah, we are, right.
We have a motion that's been seconded.
So I'd like to ask these gentlemen something in that discussion section. I may get this phrase wrong. I think I heard the phrase, it may not be the highest priority for Pathways, but it is the most shovel-ready project.
I think they were, I think it, it was a different project.
You said it. No?
I don't think I said it, but one thing that I clearly remember from when we did our priorities for Rockport, we discussed how, when things become opportunistic for us to capitalize on, it becomes a high priority, so though.
I'm just going to phrase it differently, is this the highest and best use of the funds that you have right now?
Right now. Yeah.
I, I, yes, I'll say yes. The, we haven't talked about, uh, this additional money in the committee yet, but, um, the whole point of that allocating that five thousand dollars a year into this, what do we call it here?
Reserve fund.
In the reserve fund, is specifically to multiply the effect of it for opportunistic grants. We write grants all the time, and if we don't, if we didn't have, if we hadn't, if you guys didn't have the foresight to start putting that five thousand dollars in, we would have been in worse shape. But thankfully, you do, you've done that. The, uh, the grant, we wrote this grant in two thousand twelve, and we didn't think we were going to get it at all. We just threw it up there again. And not only did we get it, but we're getting something that is an incredibly well-designed project, better than what we proposed. And I would.
It is in the master plan.
And it is.
High priority.
It is, it's a high priority in the master plan.
Okay.
It is a high priority, not only here, but it's also the highest priority in Camden as well.
Okay.
So you're talking about that synchronicity, Bill, it's, it is there. Yeah, there's some other ones that are not, like Route Ninety is not the highest priority in Camden, obviously, so.
Just like Route One North isn't necessarily Rockport's highest priority.
So it does sway away, but maritime shows up in both, well, will show up in the next version of the master plan. It actually showed up in the last, uh, ten years ago, master plan as well.
And there were how many Camden Select Board members at the Quarry Hill? Don was there.
Yeah, and I will, I want to, and John French was there too, and I think that might, no.
But at least John, John French, I sat next to John French.
Jim was there too, Jim Hurd was there too.
Okay.
Yeah, so I, I would say, and I, I can't speak for the select board, I can't speak for Pat, but I, I would say that there's generally as much support there as it is here. And the question is how to move it forward. And I, I like the recommendation to have Richard speak with Pat and to keep that process going. It makes a lot of sense, because it'll change, the number's going to change.
I can retract my second. Ken, or you are?
I'll retract the motion.
Try yours.
We're still in discussion phase.
Yeah.
Did a motion just get retracted, or no?
I think so, yeah.
Okay, so I retract my second.
So, I will move that the board express support for this project and to direct the town manager to continue working with the Camden Town Manager to come to the board with a final plan, some future date.
Second.
Does that make sense?
It makes sense. And we, of course, can discuss it with them. Discussion on this?
I'm good to go.
Okay.
Rock and roll.
I'm, I'm, so.
Can I comment? You can still.
Can I make a comment?
All right.
We are under some pressure here to make, I would encourage us not to delay, leaving it months and months and months, like has happened in the past with this project, because we are on a very small cushion that we have available. The longer it lasts, the more expensive it's going to be. So we, they would like to have an answer.
This month.
This month.
This month?
That's what he said.
December?
So that they can get the planning done.
What does the, what does the answer need to be? Yes, the nu, the number, the money is okay?
The expression, uh, excuse me, I'm sorry to drag on your discussion, but the. Think of it as a grant application. In order to make a competitive grant application, I would come to you for this type of statement of support, because the last thing anyone wants to do is give a grant, ironic to say this on this project, but to a group that isn't ready to proceed. And so the, uh, if your statement of support were as strong as, yes, if we get this grant, we'll do it, that, that would suffice, and it would give me something actionable to take to the next stop, Camden Select Board, um, most likely, and, and it wouldn't be dependent on a joint meeting occurring. But, um, that's not where the board is now, and that's, that's okay. Uh, what you already, and, and the analogy to a grant application is not really, um, apt, because we have a grant award. But, but somehow your statement, I, I want to be able to carry it forward, and I think what you have in your motion now is a, is a good step. I don't know what it will do, um, for Orel, but, you know.
More would be better, but I don't know how to make it more.
We can observe, um, the only other suggestion I have is to break it down, those two columns, and say that, you know, we, we already have, uh, we will recommend or we will continue putting the five thousand in reserve, separate action maybe, separate motion.
We can't do that until we're in the budget process.
Yeah, okay, I think you are where you're going to get, but it's, um, it, it's really concerning that we haven't been able to book this, uh, meeting with the Camden Select Board.
I mean, we can, we can, I mean, you can write a letter to them, Jamie, and say, you know, we have X number of dollars in the Pathways Reserve Fund, which, and I guess, you know, but, but our anticipation is that we'll continue to contribute to that, but we can't commit to the budget until we get there.
See, what, I mean, Megan, Megan's reading the, uh, the marvels of text messaging. What we're talking about really is the, the additional money, the additional twenty grand, is how do we get that money in? Because we have, what do we have in the? do we get that money in? Because we have, what do we have in the Pathways Reserve?
You say we have twenty-one thousand one hundred and seventy-nine dollars.
So we're close to that first piece, but what Arel needs is, he needs a commitment for the rest.
The other twenty-three thousand.
Which is actually in next year's budget, but we have to know we've got that money coming in. And so Megan and I can talk, we've texted back and forth a few times about methods that we can get that money. It, it has to get budgeted, you know, it has to get budgeted, but it, you know, a pathway to getting that money, if, so it's as least painful as possible for the board to be able to support, but we're, we haven't figured that piece out yet, because she's over there and I'm over here.
Before we all spend a ton of time on this, and maybe you guys can just answer this, but we know this isn't dead-on arrival here. Do you know it's not dead-on arrival in Camden? You do? You know that? Okay.
So we can move forward.
So, why is it we haven't been able to schedule this meeting?
It's just a matter of schedule, having ten people's calendars line up.
Except I haven't been asked if my calendar lines up yet.
No, I know. Bill's the calendar guy.
I'm going by what you folks have told me.
Right, Bill's the calendar guy.
I have provided them with five or six January dates.
Okay.
Back in late October, I want to say. Maybe it was early November.
I'll go down to Costa Lotto, put some pressure on.
Yeah, well, no, he, John, John has given it over to Pat, and we're waiting to hear back as to which date. And I'm going to, I'm going to have to go through it again tomorrow and verify that the dates that I've already given them are good.
Yeah, you've had a lot of changes. You're the keeper of everybody's calendars.
Yeah. Is January too late?
No.
Okay.
I don't think it's too late if, but I thought, I just heard that you can't make a decision in that meeting.
Well...
I think you can.
We don't know that to be chad, that was a, that was an open question. We have to be in this town to have a meeting.
You have to make it announced.
That was a question, it wasn't a statement, so.
Oh.
I think we're good. We're good.
I think we can, we can find, even if we have to drive back to Rockport and convene the meeting for a few minutes, so we can take a vote.
Yeah, we've done that before.
We can do that.
And we have done that.
Can I just ask one more process question, because I'm wondering about it. When you have a reserve fund, and it's, can't you spend that?
We can, but it's not that much money.
You're asking us to spend?
Not that much money, it's more.
We, we could commit the reserve money.
If you have the whole reserve, then it would have been a non...
We've got twenty-one thousand in the reserve, this is forty-five thousand, there's a twenty-three thousand dollar difference. We can spread it across two years, but we have to have fourteen, at least, you know, even if we split the twenty-one thousand in half, we'd have to have another fourteen point six thousand in this next, going into this next budget to make that requirement.
Find that twenty-three thousand and get a six hundred thousand dollar profit.
Arel doesn't care how we pay for it, as long as we pay.
Yeah.
That's his only, he, he doesn't...
And the reality is that we'll have to budget, in the budget season, it had to be voted on a town meeting in June.
Yeah.
The, the additional funds for the reserve account for the next fiscal year, and then...
This project comes in two thousand and eighteen.
Yeah, and then we'll, and then that's the other thing we don't know, is when is it going to come through, so. You know, we can make as, we can make as strong a statement as we can make, but we can't promise what we can't promise.
Yeah.
All right, thank you.
Okay. Okay, we have the motion to show support. It's been seconded, we've had discussion. Do we have further discussion? Hearing none. All in favor of the motion. And opposed? I'm going to have to do the roll call vote. Cassas?
In favor, four.
Warden?
Against.
Okay. Parker, four. McKinley?
Four.
Chapman, four. Four, one. This is the rule we agreed to, that when we have a split vote, we call a roll.
And for anybody who cares, I'm not really against this. I feel like I need more information.
I understand.
And I want to give other people an opportunity to...
I'll try to get you some more stuff.
Okay. We now move, this is the one we're, one of the two we're taking out of order, budget guidance for the town manager regarding the budgets presented to us in March. We have any number of ways that we can go about this. Do we want to give them general guidance, like, you know, bring it in under the LD one cap?
Or at the LD one, not under.
Or at the LD one cap.
That's going to be hard enough.
Do we want to bring it in as a flat budget from this year, which would be over the LD one cap? Do we want to give any guidance about employee salary raises? Do we want to earmark money for like the, tearing down the old building, the old library building? Do we want to put money in to redesign the intersection?
No.
There's all kinds of things that we want to give them guidance on.
Right.
The specifics, specifics are what, are what they work out with once they get the target.
Right.
We're only looking at the thirty thousand foot.
Right.
Elevation.
What target do you want me to...
And I, I mean, I will advocate again for what we did last year, which is ask you to come in at LD one, and, and then allow us to add back in things. I think that process worked very well last year. It made us think hard about what we were doing, it made us really look at justifying going over the cap, and I assume that we will again this year, but...
It's not, it's not easy for us, but we can do it. You know, Megan and I can get that done for you, and it's, it's easier for us to do that than for you to try to do that. And then you'll, you'll be able to see all of the things that we had to cut to get to that number, and then you'll have a really, you'll, you'll know what it will take to get to that number, and understand when you're putting things back, which I hope you will, you will do, that those are necessary things to keep the town running the way you want it to run.
Remind me, is, is an LD one, the figure that Ken just threw out, did we get hit with our revaluation, our, our degradation in valuation, prior to last year's budget, or between that and that?
We're still feeling the effects of that. You know, we've had, we had two, two things, the revale, and then the loss of value.
Right.
In Brewster Point, and then we had another one just recently also, and losses.
Base equipment.
Right. So there was another piece that dropped our value again. And as we talked about, you know, the LD one does not consider a loss in value, but it, it does affect us. So we're still feeling the effect of it, and we will likely feel the effect of it for a couple more years, right, Megan?
Yeah, there is very little new construction.
For, so for us to get back up to that number, it's going to, it's going to take several years. And I know Alex Armentraut at the meeting, at the, at the town meeting came up to me after the meeting, and, you know, he voted to override it, override the LD one number, and asked that, he said he hoped it wouldn't be a habit.
An ongoing thing.
Yeah, a regular thing. And I, I said, I hope that that was going to be the case myself, but it is, we're just fighting an uphill battle with the value down as low as it is. And it will be, it'll be several years before it goes back up. But I, both Megan and I agree that we, we can make the cuts. I mean, I, I don't think initially, the department heads, their budgets are pretty, are very reasonable. You know, some of the CIP items that are coming in are, are reasonable, and they're ones that you'll support. The question is, how do you pay for them in a manner that's fiscally responsible and doesn't hit the taxpayers too hard? We both agree, it's easier for us to go through and make those cuts, and then it will demonstrate to you, show you clearly what that's going to mean.
I think the question is, I presume you'd rather make them than have us make them?
Yes. As painful as it is, we, we can do that.
And in the past, have you therefore prepared two budgets then, or what's the actual form?
They've, they've kept the lines open that show the, the decrease.
Change the color.
Okay.
Yeah, well, and the budget comes in in columns where there's a department head request, and then the manager's budget, and so that's, that's where the cuts will be, is that Rick gets to wear the ogre's hat, basically. Manager says, I need so much money, and Rick says, well, I can't give you that much to meet the LD one, I've got to cut this. And we can see then what he has decided to cut, and then we have the decision to make, or with the Budget Committee also, to say, well, it's, we think that this item is important enough to add back in, and so we'll add it back in.
And the way that would work is, is with Randy sitting right here, is I would go to Randy and say, you know, I've got to get this number down, what, what cuts can I, can I make?
I understand.
The same, it's the same way. What cuts can I make that are the least painful to you?
Take it from highway.
Yeah.
Take it from highway.
Fly out apartment.
Everybody's favorite.
So it's just a matter of you guys get, I, I would much prefer to have a target to shoot at, if you're, you know, I, I'm much happier doing that, if you, if you give me one.
And for me, my two cents, I agree with basically everything that, that Ken had said. Bill brought up employee payment increases. That's about the only thing that's kind of near and dear to me, that, that they're compensated properly, and that they, they get paid nicely to incentivize, you know, and retain good talent. But other than that, the budget you prepared last time, for me, as a novice to the budget, was easy to read. You've obviously made some tough choices, so, yeah, fall within LD one and make sure that people are paid good.
Well.
And by paid goodwill, are you saying cost of living increase, or are you saying increases?
I'm saying I'll let Rick figure that out, and then we'll, we'll do it in the budget cycle.
And that, that is one we can figure out in a, several different ways, because the way we look at the budget is, we can pull out all those numbers and say, this is the impact of a one percent increase, a two percent increase, a three percent increase.
Well, our union contracts call for a two percent increase.
Our union contracts expire.
Oh, that's right, too.
That's right.
That's right, too, yep.
And they haven't even opened discussions yet.
After the committee, we'll start.
That's a little bit of a shot in the dark.
Well, they dragged it on so long last time that we told them, that first year, they had no choice, because we'd already passed the budget. We can't go back and change their salaries, because the town's passed the budget. That's to the union negotiators. So, do we have any other guidance we want to give Rick? Okay. All right, then...
Actually, can I ask one question?
Sure.
Um, Rick, when, when you provide the manager's budget, we see the cuts.
Mm-hmm.
Do we see them in a way that is prioritized?
Um, no, but we can do that.
Is that, is that a difficult thing to do?
Well, I think some of that is actually us.
No, it would be, but at least we'd have his.
What's the first layer of cuts? What's the second layer of cuts?
Yeah, and, and maybe you don't need to prioritize every one of them, but maybe there's a...
Well, the helpful thing, too, is that when we see it, we see it with Rick sitting right there. So basically, when we, when we take a segment to look at, we do a pretty robust back and forth, trying to figure out where he's at.
Yeah.
But we could include a supplemental letter that says what was...
I was just trying to expedite our own process.
It'll happen in layers, too. You know, it'll ha, it, you know, to get to the number, there's, there's a first layer of cuts, and then there's a second layer of cuts, and then a third layer of cuts, and we can...
And presumably, the later cuts are the more higher priority.
Right. We can, we could do that, right?
Okay. Then the other item that we have here that we moved out of order is the approval of the lease purch, oh, of the resolution for the lease purchase agreement with Andruskoggin Bank for the new F five fifty.
Five fifty.
Yep, it's twenty sixteen Ford F five fifty.
That's a big truck.
And we have that information in front of us.
And to the side of us.
I move to approve the following. One, that a capital acquisition project, the project, consisting of the lease of a two thousand seventeen Ford F five fifty Super Duty truck, together with associated equipment and accessories, and a dump body, is hereby approved. And, two, that the financing for the project in the principal amount of one hundred and two thousand eight, five hundred and eighty-six dollars is awarded to Andruskoggin Bank at an interest rate of two point six eight percent. And, three, that the treasurer and chairman of the Select Board are hereby authorized, acting jointly or individually, to execute the lease purchase agreement and all other documents reasonably necessary to accomplish the purpose of this vote, as the documents may require. And, four, that said lease is hereby designated as a bank-qualified, tax-exempt obligation of the town for the two thousand sixteen calendar year, under the provisions of Section two sixty-five B three of the Internal Revenue Code of nineteen eighty-six, as amended.
Second. Yes. That explains why we got this other piece of paper in front of us tonight printed in blue, because that is the explanation of that last paragraph, I think.
Are we going, Mr. Chairman, are we going to, are we going to have to adopt that policy, the policy? Is that what you were saying?
Yeah.
That'll come in?
This is the second motion.
Oh, okay.
I think, at least that's on my copy, there's another motion to adopt the policy.
Ah, that's this one. Okay, posting, posting...
Post issuance.
Post issuance tax compliance policy, yeah.
Yes, that's the other.
Are we in discussion on this motion?
We are in discussion on the first motion, yes.
Just out of curiosity, why is it that the treasurer and the chairman of the Select Board have to be specially authorized to do this?
Because it's over a hundred thousand dollars.
But, but you notice Bill can do it himself. Says jointly or singly.
Acting jointly or individually.
Right.
Well, that means that...
Just check his driveway.
If it passes, I can sign it over here, and then pass it down to Rick, and he's acting over there, so we're acting individually, as opposed to standing together and...
Gotcha.
Isn't this fun? So, further discussion on the lease?
Is that a good interest rate?
Yes.
Sweet.
So, no further discussion?
Dollar one and two percent.
All in favor?
My wife does that stuff.
That passes. Thank you, Megan. We will sign these, and he will have it.
You need to do the post issuance.
I move to approve the town of Rockport, Maine, post issuance policy as presented.
Second. Moved and seconded.
That's this policy.
And you, and here, adopt a post issuance tax compliance policy.
So far...
The same thing, right?
Yeah, our lawyer group had...
Don't want him to get out of the habit. Yep.
Um, our, Shawna, the woman that does our lease purchase agreements, has stated that because of IRS tax forms that have to be filled out, there is a box that is checked that says we have one of these policies, and they are starting to audit municipalities to make sure that we have these policies, and we apparently have been checking this box without having the policy. So we need to make sure that we have said policy.
And this is the policy. The policy's here.
It's, you're next.
It's three pages.
Yes.
Where did, did you grab this off of another town?
No, they drafted that. Our lawyers drafted that.
Okay.
And that's their recommended policy.
The kind of boilerplate-ish stuff?
I would imagine.
Looks very boilerplate to me.
Okay. Oh, there it is. Okay.
Those two paragraphs that you had first, what explains the need for that policy?
Okay.
Basically, it looks like the policy says that we'll dot all the i's and cross all the t's.
Correct. And basically, that we won't use the funds for anything other than what they're specified for.
Can't do the pathway?
No. No. Okay. Further discussion on this? Hearing none. All in favor? That passes.
Good timing.
Very good. Our next item is to sign the solar power purchase agreement with revision investments. Town meeting has given us the authority to do so.
I move to approve the power purchase agreement between the town of Rockport and revision investments, and to authorize the town manager to sign the agreement on behalf of the town.
Second.
Any discussion?
I think we've pretty well discussed this earlier.
Okay.
Earlier, and at previous meetings.
Hearing no discussion, call for the vote. All in favor? That is unanimous. Now, let us talk about marijuana.
This is going to be a wandering conversation.
Do you want to hire the chief first?
Well, why don't we bring the chief up anyway, and we'll sort of combine the two.
I'm not sure if anybody saw the news tonight, but they were talking about it on the news tonight.
I did.
Yeah, it's, I mean, there is...
I, I didn't see it. What?
Basically, there's a lot, pretty much every town in New Hampshire is looking at...
Maine.
I mean, I'm sorry, in Maine, is looking at this, and what do we do? Bottom line is, there's, there's enough time, we don't have to act tonight, or even next month. There's enough time for us to enact a moratorium at, at a bunch of points along the way, if we decide that it was necessary. We may have enough time to, if the, if the vote stands, and it doesn't get overturned because of recount, there, there will be adequate time for us to look at our ordinances and make sure that they're correct. But if we're uncomfortable with that, that there's still enough time for us to adopt a moratorium, to give us to give us more time to react and have our ordinances adjusted and modified.
Can I say two things real quick? One, just, it would be highly, highly unlikely, it's 4,070 votes, that it's gonna get overturned. So it's only, they're delaying it for whatever reason. And two, my only, my concern is that I know that there's an individual in town who would like to do something and.
He wants to do it in Rockland.
No, I talked to him, he wants to do it in Rockport.
That's a change then from what he said.
I know. But I'm.
I've talked to somebody else who's not the person you're thinking of, who's interested in doing it in Rockland.
And we had a good conversation. I'm very, I believe that this person would do a phenomenal job at making something that would be welcoming and inviting and very higher-ish. And this would not be bright flashing lights. So my only concern is, and if we can delay the moratorium to get this conversation, to get better information and try to see, my only concern is, man, if someone wants to spend money in our town to, to build and be one of the first people in the state to do it, I'm all about it.
You're assuming that we're, are, should we have a conversation about the merits of a moratorium?
Well, let's put some things in perspective here. First of all, is the recount going on? And that could take the rest of the month for more.
Oh, it's going into January.
It's going into January, no question.
The, the secretary of state then certifies those results, which gives the governor 90, or 10 days to actually issue the, whatever decree he is that says it's going into effect. However, for the medical marijuana, for the marijuana facilities, the commercial facilities, the state has to do rulemaking and they have nine months to do the rulemaking. Assuming they get the rulemaking done on time. Yep. So, you know, there's no real rush for us to do anything. If we sense that we're getting close and we don't have our ducks in order, then we could put a moratorium in for 180 days and we could extend it for another 180 days. But that would have to be a vote of the select board.
Town meeting. Town meeting is, town council's saying it has to be done at town meeting.
An emergency, emergency moratorium?
He's, he said very specifically, I asked him twice, it has to be done at town meeting and he said yes.
Okay, that's news. That's different from what MMA was saying, telling us a week, couple of weeks ago.
I'll double check with him, but I asked him twice about it, cause that was my understanding.
Okay.
Well, yeah, I mean, the idea with the moratorium, as I understand, is we get, we can do it for 180 days, we can extend it for 180 days. After that, we're done.
Your, your time is up.
So, given the fact that with the rulemaking and stuff like that, that there's, the earliest we can get a commercial establishment applying for a permit, a state permit here is probably nine, 10 months down the road. Then if we, we have time and it's, it's silly to burn our.
One bullet. To use a one bullet.
Our 360 days and then have nine tenths of it be, it couldn't happen anyway.
Well, if, if we start the conversation at an appropriate time and come to a conclusion, we don't need a moratorium.
Exactly.
Come to a conclusion.
It seems like you guys are advocating putting things off to the last possible minute as a, as a meritorious action.
Case here. You know, one of the things that we could do is we could charge, you know, right now, we could charge the ordinance review committee to go and look at whatever law, you know, changes they need to make to the land use ordinances to permit or not to permit these kind of establishments. You know, the personal use stuff, I think, is nothing that we can control.
Is, are towns gonna have the right to completely prohibit it within their town? Do we know that?
Prohibit commerce, yeah.
The commerce. The commercial growing, the commercial selling.
Did you guys get the email that I sent? Couple of weeks ago, was in the, whatever the, one of the major publications from Denver is. It was really just.
Talking about tax consequences.
Yeah, it was worth reading.
Bill opted out.
Advantages and disadvantages and certain municipalities decided it was a good idea to do a moratorium and then there were adjacent towns and, you know.
And, and the early adopters recognized that the tremendous amount of tax money coming in is not gonna be there forever, cause it's gonna even out in other, other places are gonna allow it.
Yeah, I just, the, the article seemed responsibly written. It wasn't saying, this is the way to do it. It was saying, this is what has happened.
What do you think? On this topic?
I, I think you're on the, you've got the right idea. I don't think there's any reason to rush right now. You may find out the state does a wonderful job with Owen up there and the regulations are all great and you don't need a moratorium anyway. But it's definitely something you're going to wanna look at as a town. Is it something that you want in your town?
Well, for me, I'm sorry, I.
One of the publications I read lately said that in Colorado, there's more pod shops than there are Starbucks in McDonald's.
Yeah, I saw that.
If, if you want all of your retail space filled up with marijuana, places to sell it. There's gonna be clubs that, where you can go purchase, smoke, similar to a liquor establishment. We're still looking for guidance as to law enforcement. I think what we gotta do is get through those first steps, get through the recount, get through the certification of the, the process and see what the regulatory parameters are once the state gets there. I think if you jump on putting the moratorium in, you, you may, you may burn up that, that precious time that you might want on the other end.
Yeah.
Something every town in the state of Maine's gonna have to go through, so. Some may be a little further ahead. I, if you ask two lawyers, probably you're gonna get two different answers. And they're probably both right.
Yeah.
I, I think you're on the right, right path with this, myself.
I mean, for me, I'll state that I voted no on the question, on the ballot. And my, I, I admit that we're, the country is moving toward responsible adult use of the product. But my concern is the kids. Because it is not a harmless substance, especially in kids. Where we have schools in town here, I'm gonna be very concerned about, you know, the availability of it there. And I will say to our, and so for me, a lot of it is gonna come down to exactly what Randy said, is how are the rules made with the state? How are they made? And, you know, with our representative elect sitting at the table, one thing I'll say I wanna see is I wanna see really, really strong penalties for adults procuring it for those underage. You know, for if it's 21 years old and wanna use it, I mean, that's, that's, that's the way society is going. But if a 22-year-old's buying it and giving it to a 17-year-old, I don't want them getting a slap on the wrist. I want them getting strongly, I wanna as strongly discourage that as possible. Because for me, it's all about making sure that it doesn't filter down any more than it already does. And I'm not naive enough to think that it's not in the schools now. But once it's legal and everybody says it's okay, then some kids who, who may have shied away from it because of the illegality may say, well, gee, the law says it's okay, I can use it. And in reality, there is a lot of evidence that it isn't okay for young kids.
I've also got concerns about edibles. Edibles with kids.
Yeah.
Making them appear as though it's harmless thing. And edibles have a long, long lasting effect.
I think what we're gonna find is, there's gonna be more incidental use of it because it may become more available within households. Beer in the refrigerator.
You know, well, I was thinking in terms of today, I mean, I don't know whether this is the organization that passed it. They said they wanted to regulate marijuana like alcohol. Does that mean it's gonna be available in Hannaford?
I think the regulation's.
That's a question you have to ask, you know?
I think it's coming.
Sure.
I think this is the first step into what we're looking at in the future.
What's the downside to directing the ordinance review committee to begin talking and thinking about this stuff?
Two things. Number one, their plate is full for this year.
Okay.
And number two, I think it does, it is gonna depend to a large extent on what the state rules are. You know, if the state rules come in with really robust protections against the thing that I just mentioned and maybe some others, then maybe the ORC might be more inclined to say, okay, let's, let's allow that use in certain zoning districts, you know, with, with certain regulations. If on the other hand, the rules are lax, my opinion, then the ordinance review committee might come back and say, we don't want it anywhere in town.
So there's not a constructive can be done until the state.
Well, we could, you know, we could put those in, in place already, you know, for the commercial growing of, it can only occur in these districts. For the commercial sale, it can only be in these. For the social clubs, it can only be here.
I understand what we can do, but we have an ordinance review committee.
Right.
This is clearly coming, although I, your point's well made. And there, there may not be anything for them to do because.
But what we would want our ordinance committee to do is to reflect the particular values of our town and this board. So it does make sense to me, and it doesn't seem to be a waste of time, for them to research other local control issues throughout the country. And, and there's gotta be some sort of listserv, you know, that, that is aggregating this stuff. And it's my impression, and correct me if I'm wrong, but it's my impression that the ORC as an entire body wants to, wants to wordsmith everything as an entire body. And, and I think this is something you give to a subcommittee of the ORC. And, and have them start to make progress. Because, because, you know, accrued knowledge is, has to be beneficial. And what we're looking at is the tailoring of whatever the state does. And, and it may be that the state is, goes in a direction that you're happy and you're, and everybody's happy, at which point, potentially that was a waste of time. But, you know, I don't have a sense of this board, I don't even have a sense in my own head, whether we want to be, you know, leaders and have, and have responsible locations that this can happen and therefore Rockport becomes as that, as that article that you sent out, you know, becomes an early adopter and therefore reaps the benefit.
Question. Well, that, that article actually had all kinds of community.
It, it did, yeah.
It blocked it entirely.
It, it talked about Vale and some of the other places that just said, we don't want it at all.
That's not our community, they say.
Right, right. Do we get to keep a sales tax or does it all go, so it doesn't even matter?
Yep, it all goes to state. And that's one of the things they're looking at right now as to what it is. I think the law said 10% or something like that. They're looking at maybe even 35%, which I think is what Colorado, 37% in Colorado. You know, and, and see the number of bucks, you know, I mean, you just see the cash registers.
But Colorado.
Out in their eyes.
Colorado, they get to keep that locally and.
At least some of it, they do.
Yeah.
Only through revenue sharing. That's where it comes back.
Well, no, no, I'm saying Colorado.
Oh, Maine.
Maine would be different.
We only get it back through revenue sharing. If we even get revenue sharing.
Right. Well, how, I mean, that, that's another complicated issue because right now, the revenue sharing doesn't depend on how much sales tax you collect in your town.
No, it doesn't. And it's not gonna in the future.
We can send all our residents to buy it in Rockland and we'll get revenue sharing for, you know, so it's. You know, I, I don't see how that, you may be right, it doesn't make any difference tax-wise.
Mm-hmm. I think, one of the things about this item on the agenda is just to, to bring it up as part of the discussion. I, I, I don't think we need to reinvent the wheel. I think we have time. But I think residents need to know that the board is, is paying attention to it and is considering what to do. It's not like you're sitting just waiting for stuff to happen. I think, you know, Rockport was pretty evenly divided. I think the difference was 10 votes?
Yeah, 10, I think you said.
So there's a, there's a lot of people that are happy and a lot of people that'll be unhappy. So I just think, you know, residents need to know that you, that it's, it's something you're thinking about. I don't think you need to answer the question right now about what to do. I think we have, you know, according to Phil, we have time. And there's a bunch of places where you could take action with a moratorium or not.
I mean, I could see it going on the ORC maybe for the summer agenda or something like that. Once they finish the, the work plan that we've already given them in time for the June ballot. By then, maybe we'll have some idea of where things are going. Certainly won't be complete.
Would you give that to the ORC in abstract? Or would you give it to the ORC with, after a board discussion on what?
Well, we'd have to.
Conversation with municipality officials from Belfast. So as far as getting a template from what the ORC could work off of, not wasting Jamie's time, not wasting ORC's time for them to scratch their head, I can pretty easily, once we figure out what's gonna happen on the state end and what those regulations look.
With, after a board discussion on what?
Well, we'd have to.
Conversation with municipality officials from Belfast. So as far as getting a template from what the ORC could work off of, you know, not wasting Jamie's time, not wasting ORC's time for them to scratch their head, I can pretty easily, once we figure out what's gonna happen on the state end and what those regulations look.
With, after a board discussion on what?
Well, we'd have to.
Conversation with municipality officials from Belfast. So as far as getting a template from what the ORC could work off of, not wasting Jamie's time, not wasting ORC's time for them to scratch their head, I can pretty easily, once we figure out what's gonna happen on the state end and what those regulations look.
With, after a board discussion on what?
Well, we'd have to.
Conversation with municipality officials from Belfast. So as far as getting a template from what the ORC could work off of, you know, not wasting Jamie's time, not wasting ORC's time for them to scratch their head, I can pretty easily, once we figure out what's gonna happen on the state end and what those regulations look.